Yeah. Good evening. I call this regularly scheduled Dunwoody City Council meeting on June 14th to order at 6:00 PM unless I see an objection. Seeing none, this meeting is called to order. Councilman Lambert is joining us virtually today. It looks like a really nice place to be. Councilwoman Tomage, can you lead us, please, in the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, please rise if you are able. At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Y'all are welcome to join us. Come on in. While the room fills up, I'm going to call up newly appointed Deputy Chief Carlson to present the crime, the first quarter presentation for employee of the first quarter from the Police Department. Thank you. To Casey Lowe. Can you make sure that it's on and maybe you have to speak closer to it? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, fellow council members. This here is our crime analyst that we hired back in December of 2020, Casey Lowe. She has done a magnificent job since coming to the department in this short span of time that she's been there. Our year-end crime report, which I'm sure all of you have read, she put together, gathered all the information. When we hired her, she jumped in with both feet. And we had a pretty high-profile case that she assisted on with our detectives. And I can't say enough about her. She's fitting in just well, does more than what we ask her to do, and that's all we can expect out of our employees. So at this time, I would like to, for our first quarter, I would like to congratulate Casey Lowe as our first civilian employee of the quarter for 2021.
Congratulations, Ms. Lowe, and congratulations, newly appointed Deputy Chief Carlson. Public comments? Ginger, do you want to see who's on Zoom, if anyone? I know you had sent me a name earlier.
Yes, ma'am. I do have Corinne Sparata, and I apologize if I've said your name incorrectly, but I am promoting you to panelists. She should be joining back right now. Corinne, you should be able to unmute and speak at this time.
Unmute? Got it. Anything else I have to do?
Nope. If you could just make sure that you speak loudly, please. You'll have three minutes.
All right, thank you. I am currently the present CEO of Brook Run Dog Park Association. I took over for Lane Sweeney. And we've been discussing what we would like to do with the big dog and small dog park. There are some improvements that we would like to see happen with our help and the city's help. And I spoke with Brent this morning and AJ. And we, one, would like to have a landscape architect take a look at the drainage issues that are in the big dog park especially, that a lot of trees are laid bare. We keep putting gravel and dirt, and it just leaves because of the huge rains. The roots get exposed. This would also identify some of the dead trees and take those out because branches are falling. Another thing we'd like to see is benches, which Brent has talked to me about. I applaud the efforts of John Henigan on the bathroom because we would certainly love to see that. So what we'd like is to come up with a master plan of what we'd like to see in the dog park within five years, with your permission. And another issue would be, we'd like to run a fundraising campaign on behalf of the dog park. People always want to give, and then we'd be able to put funds back into the city to enable us to do some of these improvements. And we wanted to, I am new at this, and because of COVID, I'm a year and a half behind. I've been doing it for a year and a half, and I'm behind already. Whether or not we can take on Eagle Scout projects, and if we do, who do we run that by? Who is that Brent? We're going to be flooding Brent with tons of things. And whether or not we can have a low-cost vaccination program. Some vets would like to toot their own horn and do a low-cost vaccination or microchip program in the park, and who we go through to okay those. So that's what I've got. It's kind of like an infomercial thing to just tell you who I am and what we're hoping to do.
Thank you so much. Just so you know, we don't answer questions during public comments, but I'm sure Brent has your contact information. So, thank you. Robert Wolford, please. One second. Go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council members. My name is Robert Wolford. I'm here tonight to ask you once again to establish a citizen committee that meets regularly under Robert's rules to discuss, review, and make recommendations to our city government concerning all issues involving citizens, concerns regarding diversity, social justice, and policing practices in Dunwoody. But first, I'd like to take a minute to recognize and congratulate a Dunwoody resident for an extraordinary accomplishment. Our Dunwoody neighbor, the Honorable David E. Namius, currently serves as presiding justice of the Supreme Court of Georgia and has recently been elected by his fellow justices to become Georgia's next Supreme Court Chief Justice. David is the son of immigrant parents. I first met David's mother more than a decade ago during my second career as a medical assistant. I remember well the day she walked into our clinic for a routine visit. After taking her vitals and noting what a healthy blood pressure she had that day, I'll never forget what she said to me. She said, "You know, I used to get high blood pressure, but now I give it." Suffice to say, I liked David's mom from the get-go. Bridget is a lovely lady. Both of David's parents immigrated from countries that did not respect democratic principles or values, nor the rule of law. Perhaps that is why David understands so well the last words of our Pledge of Allegiance, "with liberty and justice for all," emphasizing the word "all." So, congratulations to the Honorable David E. Namius. I trust David will bring honor, integrity, and impartiality to the highest seat of justice in our state. And David, if you're watching or listening tonight, please call or email your Dunwoody mayor and your Dunwoody City Council members to encourage them to establish a citizen committee for diversity, social justice, and policing practices in Dunwoody. Our democracy affords us the opportunity to petition our government for change, oversight, and accountability that offers hope of social justice for all of our citizens. But our system of government is only as good as the involvement of its citizens. In America, we operate in effect two distinctly different economic criminal justice systems, one for the wealthy and well-connected people and another for poor people and people of color. It shouldn't be that way, and we have the opportunity to make changes for the better right here in Dunwoody. By establishing a city-run committee, a citizen-run committee that functions openly and transparently under Robert's rule and not by Twitter feeds or Facebook likes, we will hear more voices and offer more choices to help us overcome the challenges facing our community regarding aspects of public safety and social justice. Last year, the city of Brookhaven established a citizen-led social justice race and equality commission that meets to discuss, review, and make recommendations to the city on all matters of city contracting, city hiring, and policing practices. The Sandy Springs City Government formed a diversity-inclusion task force to suggest ways to improve inclusion in city government and the community. It's a shame that we have no such committee, commissioner, or task force here in Dunwoody. So let's work together on that. Finally, I'd like to wish everyone in our community a safe and happy Juneteenth celebration next weekend. Thank you, and as always, good night and good luck.
Thank you. Joe Hirsch?
Hello, counsel. Tonight, as you know, of course, Chapter 20, you're looking at the first read for the rewrite of the sign codes, which is great in certain respects, that things certainly need to be addressed, and I'm glad that they are. It won't be the first time that you've made changes in the last 10 years. Y'all have spent thousands and thousands of dollars on consultants and hundreds of hours from the community vetting and making suggestions. And I'm not going to make any suggestions because y'all didn't ask, but I have several questions, such as why, when y'all are going to be making changes to the sign code, why at the complex next door, in front of Harbor Freight, is there a huge sign that says "now hiring"? It's been there for over a month. Go down the street just a little bit, McDonald's, there's two huge banners that say "now hiring." Those are illegal. Those have been there for several months. Why? Why is there a huge banner in front of the neighborhood of our mayor, knowing full well that it's illegal, and she's discussed it over the last several years? Why is there illegal signs at the church across from Brook Run? Why are there illegal signs at the senior center across from Brook Run? I could go on and on. I saw that, I believe it was last month, our city removed 16 signs that were illegal. I could remove 16 signs in an hour. There's a reason why they're not removed. It's performative government. You just sit up here, you make changes, nothing changes, nothing happens. We've had this discussion before. Is it a problem with our community development? Are they understaffed? Do they not understand the rules? I mean, why was it that a citizen had to tell our Parks Department that they were not allowed to hang signs on a stop sign? Nobody in the city said anything. What was that all about? Why in front of Dunkin' Donuts, Pam, in your district, that there's Dunwoody single sign that's been there for over a year? I mean, I know you said, "When we make these changes, it'll be more simpler. Everything will be better when we make these changes because it's too complicated." You know, that's not true. I mean, honestly, making changes to our sign code isn't going to do anything unless you do something. Your oath said that you were supposed to uphold our codes. When you drive by your sign in front of your neighborhood, you know it's illegal. When our community development drives by Harbor Freight every day in McDonald's, they know it's illegal, but they do nothing. And you're doing nothing by making changes. It won't change anything unless you change the city and the mindset and enforcement. I mean, you're wasting time. It's performative government. That's all you're doing, and you're wasting everyone's time and money. Thank you.
Dr. Prophet, Joe Prophet, did you want to say a few words?
Madam Counsel, I mean, Madam Mayor and Counsel. I'm a little bit nervous. I hadn't expected to deliver this, but when I was informed of some of the good things that this council is doing in the city of Dunwoody is doing, I wanted to come up and just say, "Thank you. Appreciate your service. Appreciate your time." I mean, like a lot of folks here, have issues with day-to-day operations, but more than not, we're criticized for the things that we're not doing and overlooked for the things that we are. I'm president of the National Football League Alumni Atlanta Chapter. I'm also president of Youth United for Prosperity. And I'm here today to talk about some of the things you're doing to identify one person. My nine-year-old grandson is here. And outside, he said, "I'm scared." I said, "Why are you afraid?" He said, "I've never seen so many policemen before." And I said, "JR, these are the good guys. These are the guys that protect us. And every once in a while, you get a bad one." Just like I reminded him when I was with the Falcons, we were pretty good guys, but we had some bad guys, too. Every organization has those. But I just want to say that I really mean this. Thank you for your service. Thank you for identifying the good things that our young people are doing. Is there anything I can do to help the city of Dunwoody with our program, NFL Alumni Atlanta Chapter, Caring for Kids Program, and Legends in Kids? I'll be the first one to volunteer to do that. So I want to be part of the solution, and I want to thank all of you for having the insight without being coerced or pushed to identify young folks in our community that are doing things positive. And hopefully, the next time we do this, we have a lot of news people in here because they always show up when it's bad. You don't see them when things are being done right, doing good. So I just want to say thank you for your service, and thank you for the opportunity to allow me to speak to you. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wanting to speak here? You've got to fill out a card, and I'll have Ginger check while you go fill out your card, or you can come. Ginger, do you want to check online?
If you would like to speak and public comment on the Zoom application, please raise your hand in the Zoom app. I see no hands raised at this time.
Okay, Linda, you can come up. Did you? Okay. Just fill out a card after, though, please. You have to talk into the microphone. I'm sorry. No, it don't.
I live on Vermack Road. I've been there 42 years. I've been pretty active in a lot of things that go on here in Dunwoody. And Dunwoody's such a great city. We've had so many people, council members and others, that do an outstanding job in trying to make this an extra special place. There's so many advances that have been made, roads, sidewalks, parks. One of the things that I would like to bring up with all of these advances is that we need, particularly council and those that make final decisions, we need to think about the residents who live here. I'm very concerned with the roads, sometimes where they are expanded. I'm concerned with the sidewalks. All of that influences the homeowner. One place in particular I'm very concerned about is the corner of Shambly Dunwoody and Vermack Road. They're going to make a right-hand turn lane onto Vermack Road there, and I think that is a very bad decision. I've made many turns there. I don't think there is a need to have a right turn lane there. If cars are moving forward, they move forward. If somebody wants to turn right, they turn right. There's no line for people wanting to turn right. The thing I think we need to think about is not only improving traffic, but to think about the homeowner. What about the people that live there in that house? They've been there a very, very long time. They've planted everything in the world to try to keep the noise and pollution and everything off. But I think that should have a sidewalk there from Dunwoody Place to Vermack Road. It would also benefit people that park up on the next corner, walking down to the Donaldson Bannister House, to the special events that they have there. I've been very involved with the Donaldson Bannister property, helping save it. So that would be an asset to me for the homeowner.
There's 30 seconds remaining.
Coming into events there. And the sidewalks, I am concerned, on Vermack Road, the people on the west side, I guess it is, of Vermack, you're going to put sidewalks there. I mean, that's a great idea, but those lots on the west side are small. Their front yards are probably not over 75 feet deep. And you come in with a sidewalk, which would be nice, but I'm thinking about the homeowners there, too. I mean, their life is important, too.
That's three minutes.
Thank you, Linda. Thank you. All right, we have a special proclamation. Sharon, so today, unbeknownst, I think to some people, is Janay Prophet Day in Dunwoody. And so if Janay will join me up here, Sharon's going to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. Proclamation, whereas Janay Prophet is a determined, talented, tenacious young woman with the-
Sharon, can you speak up, please?
One moment. Is that any better? Hello?
Yes, that's better, Sharon. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'll start again. Thank you. Proclamation, whereas Janay Prophet is a determined, talented, tenacious young woman with an athletic ability unsurpassed in the state of Georgia. And whereas Janay Prophet attended the Kingswood School and Montgomery Elementary School, Shambly Middle School, and Dunwoody High School. Whereas Janay Prophet met Coach Rhonda Broom, Chris Rogers, and Mike Judge at a Throw One Camp and began her throwing career at age 10. Coach Rhonda attended Career Day at Montgomery Elementary, where Janay learned about the opportunities of a student athlete and competing at a high level. Whereas Janay Prophet continued to attend camps and throwing with her club in middle school. She continued to improve year after year, eventually competing for Shambly Middle School. Janay won the Georgia Middle School Championship and set a Georgia Middle School record in discus that stands to this day. Whereas, beginning in ninth grade, Janay and her father realized she needed to increase her training to get to the next level. She began training five to six days per week, lifting weights three days per week, and throwing three to four days per week. Whereas Janay Prophet and her family moved to Dunwoody in 2018, and she became a Dunwoody Wildcat and won the 2019 state championship in shot put. Whereas in 2020, Janay Prophet was the runner-up Gatorade Athlete of the Year. Her coaches described her as tenacious, smart, and always striving to improve her performance. An unsuccessful meet to her is an opportunity to learn and improve. Whereas Janay Prophet wrote an article about the art of throwing in 2020 and describes in great detail the physics, technique, and strength needed to be a successful thrower. Whereas Janay Prophet never stops training and learning, she continues working on her technique and studying the sport to improve her abilities. Whereas, as a member of the class of 2021, Janay was undefeated in both the shot put and discus the entire season, 12 meets, 12 victories, including the state championship title while setting a state record in the shot put. The record had stood for 10 years before Janay raised it by 7.5 inches. During her outstanding senior season, Janay also broke DeKalb County records in shot put and discus, which had stood since 1994. Janay was named Atlanta Metro Track and Field Powerade Team Female Athlete of the Year. And whereas Janay Prophet has made Dunwoody very proud, she will continue her athletic career at the University of Virginia, where we know that because of her talent and commitment, she will continue to thrive and succeed. Now, therefore, I, Lynn Deutsch, Mayor of Dunwoody, Georgia, do hereby proclaim June 14, 2021, as Janay Prophet Day in the city of Dunwoody in honor of her outstanding athletic career and accomplishments as a Dunwoody Wildcat.
Next up, we have Adam Fraley. Is he coming from above? I guess, yes, I see him on the screen, coming from above. Coming from Zoom.
So we have, tonight, we have from Malden Jenkins, a partner is Adam Fraley, as Mayor Deutsch said, and he also has Christopher McKeller with him. I wanted to thank him and the Malden Jenkins team, as well as my team. We really did a good job moving this forward, and I'll let Adam take over from here. I'm going to share my screen.
Okay, yeah. Good evening, and thank you, everybody. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Okay, okay, Linda, you're going to scroll through for me?
Yes, unless you have your own. Do you?
I do, but this is fine as well. So let me just tell you page numbers, and we'll kind of-
Yep.
Okay. Well, if you want to, I think page two there. Yeah, that's just kind of an agenda. If you go to the next page. All right. So, good evening, everyone. We're here to present the annual audit report for the city of Dunwoody for its year ended December 31, 2020. And as Ms. Neighbors mentioned, myself, Adam Fraley, and Christopher McKeller are on. I was the engagement lead partner for the audit, and Christopher was the engagement director in charge of the audit, and-
I asked if you can speak up a little bit. I think that might be a little helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I'll try to. So again, you know, I was the audit partner, Christopher McKeller, who's online as well, was engagement director. And we, you know, I'll reiterate what Linda had mentioned, a lot of work on the Finance Department staff, and, you know, they did really good in getting us what we need. This was Malden Jenkins' first audit back with the city. I thought it went very smooth, so I'll comment on that a little bit more a little later in my presentation. But on what you see on the screen right now, so Malden and Jenkins were a full-service CPA firm, but we happen to have a large governmental niche within that firm. You'll see there, we serve over 550 governments in the southeast. Most of those are in the state of Georgia, and most of those are cities. If you go to the next page for me, Linda. So this is just some of the other industries that we serve, as well as some of the other services that we provide. I won't go into much detail on that, but, you know, just again- I won't go into much detail on that, but, you know, just again, some of the other things that we have, you know, within our firm. Next page. Okay, so the city of Dunwoody, just like all cities in the state of Georgia, they're required to have a set of financial statements each year in accordance with government, in accordance with general accepted accounting principles. We're required and we're hired to audit the financial statements and present our opinion on their fair presentation. We did conduct our audit. We did issue our opinion. We issued an unmodified audit report, which is often called a clean opinion. What that means is that based on all of our test work and results of those, we believe that the financial statements are materially correct and are fairly presented on the financial position and the results of the operations of the city as of and for the year ended December 31, 2020. All right, next page. In addition to the requirement, and again, that's by state law, that the city has a set of statements in accordance with GAAP and has those audited. Over and above that, the city actually prepares a comprehensive annual financial report. You'll see the additional sections for a comprehensive financial report are the introductory section, and you'll see the elements there, as well as the statistical section, and you'll see the different elements there. I would encourage anyone looking at that document to pay particular attention to those two sections. A lot of good information, especially the stats section. It's all history going back to the city for 10 years of both financial and non-financial information on the city. So a lot of good information there. I'd encourage the readers to take a look at. Next page. So along with preparing a comprehensive annual financial report, again, that's above and beyond what's required by state of Georgia law. And as you saw on the previous page, a lot of work goes into it. A lot of information's included that is in addition to just an annual financial report. So, you know, you know, really, the city's finance department puts in a lot of time, a lot of effort in putting together such a good document and having that submitted to the GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association for inclusion in their program and consideration in their program for the Excellence in Financial Reporting Program. So the city's been able to achieve that and get that award in past years, and I know that they've submitted that again this year within the time requirements that they require for their review and consideration again. So really, you know, just a big pat on the back to the city, the city's finance department for working really hard to put together such a good document and to seek that award. Okay, so this is a little bit, just some of the highlights of the numbers for the city. So, you know, the city's financial statements are broken down between the government-wide financial statements, which is kind of all the funds kind of put together, and then all the fun financial statements. So the general fund, of course, being the largest and the main operating fund of the city, we touched a little bit here on what happened with the numbers for the city's general fund during the year. So you'll see in the chart at the bottom there, a breakdown of general fund revenue sources, the largest of which being taxes, of course. And then on the next page, you'll see here a five-year trend in those taxes, made up of property taxes, franchise, insurance premium, and some other taxes. And you'll just see how they've behaved over the last five years. And then the bottom of the screen, you'll see the other non-tax revenues and how they've measured up over the last five years as well. All right. And then, so on the other side of the, for the general fund, is the general fund expenditures, and they're a little more diverse. You'll see the general fund expenditures broken down there in the pie chart. Obviously, general government's a large one, and that's general administration, et cetera, as well as public safety being a large one. And then some of the other areas, including public works and judicial and recreation, et cetera. And then, so ultimately, down at the bottom there, you'll see the general fund revenues compared to the expenditures, and this is over the last five years as well. And you'll see general fund revenues outpace general fund expenditures this year in that chart below. All right, so the net change in fund balance, so this is either the increase or the decrease in general funds' fund balance. Oftentimes, folks will, in layman's terms, refer to it as net income, if you will, but it's really the net change in fund balance. And you'll see there that about, and this is in thousands, you'll see about 6.5 million was added to fund balance for the general fund this year. All right, so that was on the general fund, again, the main operating fund. So when you talk about government-wide financial statements as a whole, when you collapse everything together, and that's kind of citywide, you'll see in the middle of the page there, so the statement of net position, which is kind of the balance sheet, if you will, the government activities equity position increased from 145 million to about 150 million during the year. And the business-type activities increased from about 3 million to about 3.8 million. So in reference to those, it's referred to as net position. In reference to those, you'll see in the next paragraph there, a lot of it's obviously tied up in infrastructure, roads, bridges, et cetera. And you'll see that for governmental activities and business-type activities, at the bottom of that paragraph, about 35 million for governmental activities and about 2.5 million for business-type activities was considered unrestricted. In other words, it was not in infrastructure assets or other capital assets. It was not restricted by any other outside parties. And those amounts are kind of considered for, you know, future operations of the city. All right, next page. So you can click through these next couple pages, Linda. This is really a Cliff Notes version to the footnotes to the financial statements. And so as you look at the comprehensive annual financial report, you can refer back here to those. Excuse me. And then the next page here, this kind of goes into our required communications. I'm not going to read and touch on necessarily any, each one of these, but I do want to touch on a couple, if you wouldn't mind going to the next page for me, Linda. Okay, yeah, so, you know, obviously, our first audit of the city, you know, coming back and being the judge for the city. You know, one of all these things that I feel like is important for councils to know on whether we had any significant difficulties encountered in the audit. I'm happy to report we didn't. You know, the entire finance staff, including folks outside of finance that we're reported to or that we requested information of, were completely cooperative, timely, in providing information so that we can complete our audit and present these results to you tonight. Next page. We did have some audit adjustments. They have been discussed with management. They've been recorded in the general ledger or accounting system of the city. And they've also been reflected in the comprehensive annual financial report, so again, to make sure that they're fairly presented. You know, clicking down a couple there, you know, disagreements, along with, you know, what I said previously. We didn't have any disagreements with management over any, you know, accounting standards or implementation of those standards. And so, you know, it went really well. And again, you know, we certainly appreciate that from everyone that we had to, that we encountered throughout the audit. At the bottom of the page there, independence. That's kind of the cornerstone by which we conduct our services. We are independent CPAs. We are independent auditors. We have to maintain our independence. And so that's very important, and just to know that we are independent of the city. Okay, so the next page, we did have a couple findings. And again, so this entire document, the comprehensive annual financial report, the findings, everything, were all discussed with management. They're also presented to the city's audit committee for their review and approval before coming to you this evening. We did have one finding here related to revenue recognition. This really is just of accounting nature in recognition of revenue having to do with forfeited or seized assets. This is honestly something, the city's probably been accounting for this in a certain way for going back many years. And what we did this year is we actually corrected that. And so this was a finding, the standards require us to cite it, but at the end of the day, it was corrected. So this has already, so the corrective measure has already been put into place and actually reflected in all the documents that you have this evening. All right, next page. The only other finding that we did, so of course, the city and its component units, namely here being the Dunwoody Convention and Visitors Bureau, obviously deals with public funds. Under state of Georgia law, those public funds are required to be either insured FDIC, et cetera, or collateralized at 110% of the deposit amount. For the Dunwoody CVB, there were amounts that were not covered by either depository insurance or collateralization. And so that was a, this is a compliance with state law finding we noted here with the Convention and Visitors Bureau. And then the, so I think we have two, at the bottom of the page there, referred to in parentheses as a management point, and then I think on the next page, there's another one. These aren't findings. These aren't anything that the standards require us to cite as findings, but they're kind of a byproduct of our audit, if you will. And so they're just things that we noted as we're conducting our own procedures or as we're gaining our understandings of this internal control or that internal control, and where we see things may be able to be streamlined or just other recommendations for the city. The first one, just being on IT, obviously cybersecurity is a, is an increased threat and continues to increase for all of us, including the city of Dunwoody, and so, you know, a recommendation there on that. And then the next page, and of course, again, these were gone over with management. And the next one is just having to do with really the timing of this. This was caught by management, caught by Linda's office, and it really just kind of maybe a little more proactive in looking at the information provided by the DeKalb County Tax Commissioner in recognizing essentially where they have discrepancies so that we make sure that we're reporting things correctly in the city's financial statements. And then, so the rest of the document, under other matters, it mentions the new accounting standards coming out. I'm not going to go into all of these in detail or necessarily with you, but certainly, if anyone's having trouble sleeping at night, you can refer back to this. But these, really, we just want to keep the council, we want to keep the finance office, everyone involved, or I mean, sorry, everyone ahead of the curve when it comes to new accounting standards that are coming out. So this really is a listing and an information about the new standards coming out, starting here and on the next several pages. The GASB, which is the standard-setting body, they did give kind of a year to 18 months leeway or, 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 shoot, I'm trying to think of the right word. They pushed it back a little bit for us because of COVID-19. But now this next year is the year when they're going to, you know, everyone, local government's going to have to start implementing these standards. So again, just want to keep everyone abreast of these. So, and that concludes my presentation. If you've got any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
Thank you. Questions? John?
Thank you, Adam, for the presentation, and I'd like to welcome Malden and Jenkins back to the city of Dunwoody. You've served us well in the past, and I'm looking forward to our continued relationship moving forward. I know that you gave some of the report to the internal audit committee, and I'm sure you're well aware that Mr. Mulcahy passed away, and that we are still, I'm sure, council is going to want to replace our internal auditor. Is there anything in your report that you would want us to talk to our next internal auditor about? What can we be doing to improve our own processes and double-checking everything that we do? Is there anything at all that you can suggest for us in that perspective?
You know, I would say, well, number one, you know, other than obviously what I just kind of went over, I don't know that I have really anything additional that may be to kind of consider in the internal audit process, or what, I mean, obviously, I noticed a couple things in my report that are internal control-related. And so, you know, certainly, you know, if you want to use that as a checklist, if you will, you know, for future, you know, internal audit. But, you know, one thing that I do know, and this is really just kind of me being a part of the meetings when y'all were approving the contract, when I've been in meetings with their internal audit committee and all them, talking about cybersecurity. And, you know, I guess one thing that I applaud you for, I guess, is the fact that I think that y'all are on the path to breaking out, having like cybersecurity audit, that sort of thing, from the traditional internal audit. It really is its own animal and really deserves its own skill set and expertise. And so I would encourage you to continue down that road. I mean, obviously, that, you know, that's really the biggest thing that, you know, we're facing these days outside of
Thank you, Adam. I appreciate the answer. Christopher, I see you popped up on the screen. Is there anything you'd like to say?
I don't know that I have anything additional to add to that.
Okay, well, thank you. I really do appreciate the comprehensive report, and I look forward to, again, working with you in the future.
Tom, do you have anything? Okay, Joe, Stacy, Pam, Jim?
Just that I like seeing a clean report.
So I have a quick question for y'all, which is, is it some of the things that you mentioned, I assume the bank account issue has been corrected, right, for CVB? Yes, and just want to clarify for the public that that issue has been addressed. And then the, some of the other issues, because y'all were our first auditors, right? And so when you went through this process and you called a few things that obviously maybe had not been set up properly to begin with, is there anything else that's evolving that our staff needs to know ahead of time? Or is just in the new accounting practices addresses everything?
You know, really, I think that it's in those new accounting standards that are coming out. I mean, that, I mean, to me, just raises to the top of my mind is cybersecurity and the new accounting standards. The GASB keeps us all very busy, and so to stay ahead of the curve on that is the biggest thing, I think.
Well, thank you. All right, thank y'all very much. We appreciate it to what Jim said. Thank you. And now we have our city manager's report. Eric?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
You speak as loudly as you can. I think the fan is making it harder to hear, but it's warm in here.
Okay, okay. The, let me go over the report for June 11th, the weekend in June 11th. Peeler Road sidewalk is still underway. It's nearing completion. The Tully Mill sidewalk is about, has 98% of all the concrete work has been complete, and the paving began on June 1st, and that should be substantially completed by mid-June. We also have the spaulding at Shambly-Dunwoody intersection. The curb and sidewalk are 70% complete there. On our overall paving for the city are about 60% complete with that project. And also, the Mount Vernon Place sidewalk will begin construction this week. I wanted to point that out along with the Georgetown Gateway Project, which is the notification of upcoming utility work, was sent to adjacent property owners, and then the tree removal for relocation of utilities is planned for this week as well. So those are a couple of the highlights in public works that I wanted to point out. As you go through the report, it was, it's in your packet, you'll notice quite an active role on the, for the police department, about three pages worth of different items. I'll let y'all read through that at your leisure. For the Parks Department, the Austin Park demolition work is complete for the old Austin Elementary School. Also, on June 3rd, we had our Waterford Park ribbon cutting, which was a great, a great day for the city to get that park open. I want to thank all the council members, had the vision to get that moving, as well as the staff for the hard work on that, on that neighborhood park there, which of course is open to everybody, to the public. Also, we had this past weekend, the Groovin' on the Green. They are at Brook Run, which is an awesome event to get everything started back at that park as we emerged from the COVID crisis. Community development, we had 566 building permit inspections, excuse me, not permits. Inspections issued since the last report with 131 new permits, which also included 46 erosion control permits and inspections. Code enforcement had 171 inspections and issued 37 warning notices. And we also inspected 20 vacant properties as well. 20 vacant properties as well. So here again, a busy, a busy time for that department. Economic Development, the Economic Recovery Advisory Committee was formed to advise the mayor on short term recommendations to facilitate the recovery of Dunwoody's key economic sectors from the COVID-19 crisis, and also longer term strategies for systematic change that creates a more vibrant economy into the future. We also are taking the lead on 150,000 hour grant we have for our Community Development Assistant, and that's through the Atlanta Regional Commission. So it takes us into information technology. We are still working on our migration to the cloud. And another note there that may be the public would like to hear, which is the tornado siren, we're trying to get that back online at Brook Run Park. That's in the final stages. It should be ready for this week for as far as safety. Our Dunwoody Digest should arrive in the mailboxes late June or early July. So that is going out. And in finance and part of finance with our new contract is our risk management program. And that is in full swing now to get to have a full assessment done of what our needs are within that department. There are a few other departments mentioned within the report. I'll be glad to take any questions that Mayor that you or the council may have on this report.
Any questions? Tom, do you have any questions? Start a second. John?
Thank you, Eric, for the comprehensive report. I was happy to hear about the paving going well. And that's the one issue I want to talk about. I just want to reiterate that every street in Dunwoody is a little different when it comes to paving. Some are easier to pave, some are harder. We've added a subdivision Briar's North into our paving mix this year. It's a difficult street to pave in the sense it's a one way in, one way out with relatively narrow streets with cars sometimes parked on the streets. I think that neighborhood needs a little special attention. I just want to reiterate that they need to be well aware of the timing of that paving and an action plan and how to assist those residents for in and out, or how it's going to impact that community. I want to make sure we do a good job paving those streets, but I also want to make sure that the city is efficient in doing so. So if you could just put that on your radar, that's that's the one issue I'm kind of just a little bit worried about when it comes to our paving this year in the sense of the special needs of the community in which the streets are being paved.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I appreciate. Thank you so much.
Joe?
Thanks, Eric, again. I totally love the what's going on at Peeler Mill, Peeler and Tilly Mill with the sidewalks and so on, the wall. And actually, I had some residents that were at the Groovin' and Green that live right on Tilly Mill. And they applauded that. They said, wow, this is great, because we're walking with our kids. And they had the wagon and everything and just love the ability to walk to the park, enjoy that concert. So they're very happy. And of course, they understand how long it takes to do things and surprises happen along the way. So that's a good thing. I would just like, I love the report. I love to tweak it a little, the way that's organized, just to say, completed, in progress, upcoming. I can read the verbiage, some say in future and stuff and someplace, but just, I like to like hit each one. Let me see, public works, what's all the ones that are upcoming? What's in what's going to happen in the next, you know, something like that. So just just a minor tweet, but appreciate the report. Thank you.
Stacy? Jim?
This works. Thanks.
Appreciate it. And as a reminder to the public, as you look through it, it's a is this a month's worth of data, I think?
That's correct.
For the past month. Right. So everything's going to be more because there's longer between the reports. So like with the police report. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sharon, do you need to for the public hearings? Do you need to start them right?
Yes, Mayor, I'll need to read the resolutions and ordinances. So I will start back for number five, which is and I'll read this again at number 12 as well. This is a resolution of the Mayor Council of the City of Dunwoody, authorizing, among other things, the execution of documents relating to the acquisition of land for parks and recreation.
I think we have a presentation from Jim and Jay. Jay, you're upstairs and Jim is down.
As we call it, I think it's the new term.
I couldn't understand what you just said. The audio is kind of funky tonight. So if you could come down maybe while Jim starts. Thank you. Thank you. Sorry.
This will be a quick one. Jim Woodward, a law firm, Greg Woodward, I'm y'all's finance attorney, government finance attorney.
And if you could, we're struggling with audio a little bit. Thank you. Sorry.
And basically, our firm does government finance throughout state of Georgia, with a lot of cities, counties and school districts doing financing transactions like the one proposed tonight. And actually, I worked with the city for your last two financing, including the financing for this building we're in right now and using the same structure. But what this is, this is the first step of the process, legal step is required under Georgia law. In order to do this type of financing, we have to have a public hearing, which basically allows anyone from the city to show up and ask any questions about the project itself. And so basically, we need to open the hearing up to the public. Anyone wants to ask any questions, you know, we can respond, I can help respond as well. And then what we'll do is at the next item under business item, I'll discuss what the resolution is and and items that'll be approved. Basically, it's the financing for the parks, what we're looking at. But really, this portion is this open up to the public if anyone has any questions about the project itself.
The project or the financing?
The project itself.
Okay, the project itself. Okay.
Any questions, I'll be happy to answer as well.
That's fine. Okay. So with that, I will, unless there's an objection, I will open the public hearing. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Were we going to have a report from staff in a sense of the
Maybe he's coming. Sorry.
I'm just thinking of the whole logistics and the actual things that we're
Doing. Okay. Well, here he is. I'm sorry. I forgot that I told him, ask him to come down. And also, while we're pausing, Eric, anybody that's here that's on the agenda, if you could just ask them if they can physically be down here tonight, that would be helpful just because we're struggling with audio.
Will do, Mayor. And I apologize for the audio. And Jay, if you'll speak up from the presenter standpoint as well, we can hear the presenter on Zoom. But everybody that's in the building, you will go downstairs if you're going to present. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
And your question, as I missed it coming down the elevator.
Are you doing a presentation about logistics or anything at this point? This is just the public. The logistics are in the agenda item, right? Okay. The logistics are in the agenda item. Okay. All right. So seeing unless there's an objection, I open the public hearing. Go ahead, John.
I'm just I'm trying to understand how the public's going to make questions when there's no information being presented by the city. There's no logistics in the sense of the financials and how it's all working. I don't understand how that I'd rather have the city present to us the interest rate, the terms, the prepayment penalties and all that stuff, so that we can answer any questions that the public may have, opening it up to a public hearing without any information. So he doesn't seem appropriate. Thank you.
Here's here is the best way to summarize the action so far. We put out an RFP out on the street for banks to come back to us for long term. We actually had three banks apply. We had BBNT, Truist Bank, Bank out of the West, Zion Bank, which is the one that was chosen in the end, and Snobius Bank were the three that put in. And all the rates were competitive. And we also asked them to put together either a 10 year limit with an interest rate and a 15 year limit with an interest rate. And when we did that, one of the banks, Snobius, only submitted a 10 year rate. So we removed that one from the equation, even though we did review it. If we were just doing 10 years, it was something to look at. When we looked at Truist against Zion, the 10 year rate was going 1.68 for Truist and 1.71 for Zion's bank, as opposed to the 15 year, which was 2.2 for Truist and 2.06 for Zion. Well, when we started to look at the next in the near term on the payments, we were expecting somewhere around the annual payments, about 485, 490,000, when we were also thinking we were going to get like 2.2 or 2.3% as our 15 year rate. Once we looked at that, and we looked at the comparison between the two on the all the ancillary parts about prepayment penalties or issues with prepayment, we the committee that was, it was Linda, myself and Eric, all chose Zion's Bank at the 2.06 rate, which would get us payments of 448 a year, 448,000 a year, which would be 966,000 of interest over the life of the loan. There are no prepayment penalties with this. So if a year or two, we have extra capital that we can spend on it, we can instantly go ahead and pay off the principal on that part of it. And that's where the the main thing for today was that's the kind of the missed decision point that was made was the recommendation of that to council. And what you're voting on tonight is the agreement of that term with those banks and also the purchase of the property, along with the lease with GMA, because we will not own this property when it when it's done. GMA will own it, we will lease it. And at the end of the lease, we will own the property at that point.
Okay. All right. So I'm going to open the public hearing now. Unless I see objection. Seeing none, the public hearing is open. And we will offer 10 minutes per side, starting with those in favor of the resolution. And we'll do counsel questions and stuff the way we always do in public hearings after the public hearing. Anybody in here to speak in favor of this? Okay, Ginger, can you tell? I almost forgot.
Yes, I do have someone on Zoom. Wolves, you should be able to unmute and speak.
Thank you, Ginger. Can you hear me, counsel?
We can. Thank you.
My name is Robert Wolford. I would like to speak in favor of this resolution approving the closing documents regarding regarding the financing and acquisition of land for the city for parks and recreation purposes. Do I have 10 minutes? Are there others that are going to want to speak?
It's I don't know for sure. As far as I know, you're the only person wanting to speak.
Okay, well, with respect of anyone else who wants to speak, if I'm speaking and someone else wants to speak, I will, of course, acquiesce and 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 give them time. So just let me know, please. So I am speaking in favor of this resolution. The main point I want to make to this council is, you know, I applaud this kind of activity by our city government. Too often, our city government is very quick to allow grants and funding, whether through a financial project like this, purchasing land or anything for Fortune 500 companies in Dunwoody or businesses and things that that they see as investments in corporations or community businesses, which have financial clearly defined financial benefit to the city. And this this kind of investment, I would like to call it an investment and not spending, because I know if anyone does speak against this, usually what the argument is, we're spending our money, we're you're spending our tax dollars on something that doesn't bring some kind of tactile return. But what I would like to say to the to this council is that an investment like this, using our tax dollars to purchase land for parks and recreation, brings a benefit that isn't seen in a quarterly statement. And COVID made that abundantly clear to everyone. When businesses shut down and we couldn't go to a, let's say, a 10 foot by 10 foot public space that that some corporation was kind enough to donate to the city for a public space, we had our parks to go to. So my wife and I would go to Brook Run Park, we would go to Purnishell Park, we would meet with people, we would play with people, and we would enjoy the outdoors. And this was a benefit to our community that no one really would have seen coming and and seen the use of it prior to COVID. It just made it quite abundantly clear that parks do bring a tangible benefit to our community and they're worth investing in. So those are my comments tonight. I'm in favor of the this resolution to approve the funding for the the purchase of this land for these parks. I'd like to add that I hope that part of this park remains a passive park, so that people could just go and enjoy trees and nature and green and grass. And there is value in that that is often not recognized by the community until people realize that open space, green space, passive space in a park where people can meet and exchange ideas and have fun, all people of all colors and creeds and citizens or not can come to Dunwoody and enjoy it. It's a it's a tremendous benefit for our community. So I'm speaking in favor of it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for this?
Please raise your hand in the Zoom application. I see no other hands raised at this time.
Okay. And anyone who would like to speak against it? Denny, come on up. And Ginger, can you ask on the Zoom application, just so we can see if we have people waiting?
Yes, please raise your hand in the Zoom application.
If you would like to speak against it.
If you would like to speak against, I apologize.
That's fine. That's fine.
I see no hands raised.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Pleasure to be here tonight. Now, Tom, what are you doing down here vacationing? The I just I am I am speaking in opposition to this because of various reasons. But number one is transparency. I was John and I've served 11 years here. And I can't tell you how many times he brought up to me that the fact that, you know, we haven't brought this up to the citizens. And I think it needs to be delayed and brought to the citizens in language that all of us can understand, not 150 pages of stuff that hardly anybody understands. So you know, and here we are, we're having this right now, tonight, and in six items down, you're going to vote on it. I don't think that quite gives time for to vet out there amongst the citizens, the details of what this is. So you know, I think that's number one. Number number two is, you know, I hear all the time about we need so many acres of parks per thousand or 10,000 people or whatever it is. And it's always a round number. And that all of you are lone learned folks up here, that ought to make you question something right away. We need we need what 10 acres for every 100,000 people? Where'd you come up with that number? You know, is there is there a qualification of where you came up with that number? Or did you say, hmm, if you remember a few years ago, when we were going to buy some land over on the other side of town, the first couple of years we were here, John, you were here, maybe maybe Lynn. But you know, we looked at that. And I the Parks guy came out with a estimate of we had an $18 million budget, he came out with a cost of $61 million. And he had this number of parks land. And I said, where'd you come up with that, by the way? And he said, well, I learned that in college in a class. And I said, okay, I said, did you ever come up with any statistical data yourself to support that? He said, well, not really. But you know, these are professors, they should know that. I so you know, when you come up with round numbers, you should question that immediately. But you know, some of the things that I think that we should talk about, you know, is, did we negotiate the price?
Sorry, I missed that. Could you say it again, please?
Hey, Siri, get out of here. Which 20, which 20 IT people did that? I know it's one of your pulling tricks on me. I'll I'll track you down. But let me get back to seriously. Did we negotiate the price? Did we counter? You know, that's that's a question I would have. And I think we can, I think that's a back and forth situation here. So you can answer that. But I, you know, you just pay this price. That's not very good financial acceptance. So I think I don't know if we did. Maybe we did. We did not. Okay, you know, that 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 kind of surprises me. In financing, and you know, I read I read through that today. I mean, there's no citizen in this city that I think that I know unless you're a financial guy here, that's going to read all that stuff and understand it. You know, I did come up with the 2.06 15 years and that kind of stuff. But you know, all that other stuff, you know, simplify it, you know, your old KISS principle, keep it simple, stupid, you know, come up with the 12345, the questions, you know, what is the interest rate? Okay, what is the interest cost? I can kind of figure it out. I think it's somewhat over about 1.1, 1.2 to 3 million, somewhere in that neighborhood is the interest cost. I don't know exactly how it is, because I'm probably not quick enough to figure that out. The what are the what are the annual payments? So well, you just came up with that 448,000 for 15 years. Is that correct? 448 a year. Okay. And where's that coming out of the budget? You know, where's how is that going to be covered in the budget? Is there going to Is there going to be anything cut that the citizens want other than that? I don't know, you know, it's probably a simple answer. Uh, you know, I know what the budget was last year, I know what the bottom line was, and I know there wasn't, that money wasn't in there last year, maybe it is this year. But, uh, that's another thing, I think you need to clarify to the citizens there in being, uh, totally transparent. What's, what's the cost, you know, what is the purpose that you bind? Okay, it's the last piece of partial, but is that the reason we buy something? It's the last piece of partial land that we can make the park? Uh, no, we need, we need to know what we're gonna do with that park. Uh, right down the street, five blocks is, uh, the Donaldson Bannister House. You go a quarter of a mile around the corner and there's Purnachal Park, and you go down, uh, what's it, uh, Shandley Dunwoody? And, uh, there's at, uh, we have a small park there that we, uh, negotiated when we bought that property. Uh, so, you know, is, we need to take and just say, okay, we need this many acres of park. That's, that's really ambiguous. What we really need to understand and, and decide is, what, how many acres of quality park do we need? Quality park, you know, I was a big pusher of what went on at Brookrun, you all know that. And, and let me tell you, Saturday night, uh, brought that all, all back to home to, to roost and, uh, and, and for those of you that worked on that, like, uh, Brent and all the other folks that worked on that over the years, uh, boy, it was good to see that come to fruition, but that, that's quality park. Uh, to have a hundred acres of park or to have a ten acre park, what are we gonna do with it? Got to have an idea of that, and then what is the capital cost? Involved in, in that cost, that's, that's gonna be part of the cost. And then you come down O and M cost, operational maintenance cost, how much is that going to be? How, what is the addition there, do we have to hire more parks people? But, you know, what is the total cost of this project? You know, total cost, not just buying the land. And I'm, I'm very, very, very surprised that you didn't make a counter offer on, on, on the property. I mean, uh, you know, huh, you said you didn't.
No, you said, did you make an offer at asking price and we said we did not?
No, I did not say that.
Oh, okay, I misunderstood you.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We nego- we negotiated.
You did negotiate the price?
Yes, yes.
And did we get the price down below the asking price?
Yes.
Okay, and by how much?
Expecting six and we're paying five point six.
Okay, I was told that was what it was for sale for, by one of the developers in town, but, you know, I'm just, just, uh, again, acres of park is great, but, you know, you've got to, you, you also need to have it dispersed around the city. You know, the park that, uh, we worked on over there, uh, that you, you, you opened last week, great idea, because, boy, that area needs parks over there badly, we all know that. And, uh, that's been a heck of an addition over there and had a very low cost, by the way, so, you know, I'm all in favor of that. In fact, I look forward to the trail there someday, when we get some more money, we can fix that trail. But that, the whole thing is, is that, you know, debt is not our friend, debt is just not our.
There's two minutes remaining.
Okay, thank you, I'll try to, I'll try to wrap it up here. But debt isn't our friend, you know, and to put the citizens in debt, this is a great debt, I feel, then, of course, I was involved in it, so maybe I do. But over there, you know, just having ten acres of land, you know, we also, we're, we could put about ten or maybe fifteen million dollar homes in there and get a little tax money also. But that's why I'm against it, and, uh, you know, if you, uh, simplify everything, get it out to the citizens of what it's gonna really cost, do, do, big price, okay, then I'd like to look at it and I'd like to see your, you know, your financing. So, thank you very much, have a great evening.
Okay. So I think there's like a minute and a half left, is there anyone else who wants to speak against it? I see none. So with that, I will close the public hearing and ask Jay to come up and maybe address some of the questions that were just raised. Maybe the microphone's off.
There we go, now, let me do something.
Okay.
Siri, turn yourself off. Um, to give a little bit of also background on the, about a financing on a parcel like this, one thing that the community is looking at, and I applaud Mayor and Council on this, is that this is an asset that won't just be used by the people that are on board now. The citizens that are here may or may not use it, but citizens twenty years from now will use it. And that's why you look into actual financing, something of this, and the GMA Bricks and Mortar Program is probably one of the best examples in the state of a program that allows communities to do this. Uh, the council tonight will be able to take out a loan at basically two percent interest. And over the life of the loan, if we pay every year and don't pay off early principal, we'll be looking at just shy of a million dollars, about nine hundred and sixty-six thousand of interest. But the people that will be paying for this asset are those that are here today, here five years from now, here ten years from now. So everybody that will be using it will be contributing to it. Uh, when we started to look at alternatives on financing on this, we looked at cash straight out first. And while we, um, one thing I do also applaud Mayor and Council, this one and previous ones, is having a very robust fund pow- policy, which that has allowed us to weather the pandemic incredibly well. We didn't have to, we didn't have to furlough people, we didn't have to raise taxes, everything worked fine because we had money to lean on. The one thing this has done is also pushed that up into what you will see later on when we discuss the twenty twenty-one mid-year budget. We'll end up probably with a reserve somewhere around seven or eight months at the end of this calendar year. Now, that's about seven, seven and a half million more than the four months required, okay? Now, could the council pay for this all with that? Yes, but then again, we're using the current money to pay for it, and then our cushion to weather any economic storm is literally cut in half. So by financing, I think you've got probably one of the best situations where the council can find something that's useful, use it for the community at large, and also have the payment made by the appropriate individuals that are using it in the future. And that's just kind of a, a thirty thousand foot look at it, but if you've got any other questions you'd like for me to address right now, I can't.
Okay, council, any questions? Tom, I'll start with you, just because I might forget you. No, okay. Um, the sunset looks like it's about to set there, life. Um, anybody else have questions or comments? Go ahead.
Uh, Jay, we also have a number of other properties that are possible in the city. We actually have a, something for sale on Schallifer. Can you explain how, that was a prior purchase, uh, for Parkland, I believe it was, and it was developed into a planned development, um, aspect that's now for sale, I believe it's for about seven million dollars. So there's a possibility that we could take funds if we really wanted to, future council or this council, if it were to turn out. We could turn that seven million dollars and pay this off in about three months if we wanted to, but as you say, that's then the use of cash today to develop other parks or this park or to put improvements in would also be impacted. So there's things like that that also could be done, is that correct?
Yes, that's, that, that's, that's always the, the, the trade-off between now and later payments.
Thank you, just want to make sure that, that was on the table.
Anybody else? So, um, I don't really have any questions, I, I just have, well, I actually have one question. Um, no, I don't, um, I just, so, to be clear, while it may, it may seem like there's not been a lot of vetting and, and because of the current real estate market, we had to move relatively quickly. The public response to this has been overwhelmingly positive. The amount of Dunwoody residents who have spoken to us about how glad they are, they, they are that there are not homes going on there was, I was blown away, I was not at all expecting it, and so, um, and I like, you know, we have potential options for finances, we've been very careful. Um, you know, these are, this, to me, is a positive opportunity, um, moving forward, and I think homes would actually cost the city money, because we don't really cover our expenses on homeowner, um, property taxes-ish.
It depends upon the value of the home, so ish is the correct.
Ish, so, anyway, okay, um, but I, go ahead, John.
I'm sorry, if I could just ask one more question in the sense of process, um, we are, we have this on the agenda tonight. We have a, another thing on the agenda tonight, we are approving it, if all goes well, we're signing contracts today. Is, in the sense of first read, second read, the process of purchasing land, are we following our own policies and procedures in the sense of first read, second read, is that needed? Is? And then it all, I ask with the next question right away, and that's the sense of, have we gotten back all of our due diligence? Have we gotten our, uh, appraisals, have the appraisals come in? Do we have all documents ready to, um, explore the, the possibility of moving this forward? Are we doing the due diligence and have we met all of our purchasing requirements in order to purchase this property tonight?
Right, on the, um, on the phase one environmental, which is one of the requirements under state law, that we have to, um, go through to purchase a piece of property, that was fine. I looked over it again this afternoon, it's actually in your documents as well. Um, I believe it's in there, the phase one in there, but nonetheless, it's, uh, it was fine. The only thing on any properties is similar to what you may have on any other piece of property, there's a gas can over here, nothing to it. I mean, you know, it's for the lawnmower, it's gone, no staining of any subsequent, subsequent on the ground, it was a farming area. Um, the other part of it is the appraisals, the appraisals all came in, you know, just slightly above the purchase price. So it's, that's within line, uh, we have, we had two appraisals done because of the cost of it. And so those, that part of the due diligence is in good shape. And, um, Bill Riley is also in here, I want Bill to answer the question about the two reads. I see, Bill, you're, looks like your mic is hot.
Yes, it's hot, no, we're, we're fine on this. Um, this, the, the actual purchaser is gonna be GMA and we're gonna lease back from them. We're assigning our rights to GMA to, uh, to, uh, purchase the property and then we'll do a lease back on it. Uh, and to answer your other question, council member, uh, we've done the title work on it, the title is clear. Uh, Jim and our, uh, commercial closing attorney who closed Waterford for us and is also closing this for us, is prepared to go and, uh, and has, he has all the documents and all the numbers that he needs to have, and we anticipate closing it on the twenty-eighth.
And, and I think, uh, Mr. Riley, I believe the papers will be signed this evening, if, if.
Right, the, the, that's right, upon council approval, we're gonna sign all our paperwork tonight, we'll close it out on the twenty-eighth.
Thank you.
And as far as public notice, we did have a number of public notifications that we were doing this. I mean, uh, I'm trying to make sure that the due diligence from that perspective is done.
And it was in the newspaper as well, we have to add advertisement, Jim, did you, you want to come up?
You need to answer, and I'm sorry, you need to answer it in the microphone.
Uh, for this public hearing, uh, the statute requires a two-week notice in the paper, and that, that ran, I believe, three weeks ago, uh, outlining, you know, the project and what we're looking to do, the lease purchase structure. And so, uh, so that was an invite to show up to this meeting, uh, to ask any questions.
All right, thank you, uh, uh, from our packet, I don't remember seeing the environmental, I don't remember seeing the, the, uh, appraisals. Um, it was there any easements on the property that the city is going to be impacted by?
As part of the due diligence, we also have to do a, a full survey of the property and no easements were found.
No easements were found, all right, all right, thank you, no other questions for me, I appreciate all the work.
And just to be clear, that's how we purchased this building, right? It's through, it's the same GMA bricks and mortar, okay, just making sure that, I, I thought that was the case. All right, anything else, anybody?
I want to say, Mayor, Council, I want to, you know, thank you for, for looking at this property, identifying the property. It is a rare opportunity in a, in a city that's, you know, thirteen square miles, to come up with a piece that's almost ten acres in size. It's a very nice piece of property, level, uh, for the, you know, as, as level as you can be in this, in this region. And the fact that it was an old farm area, has two houses on the property now, um, just while we're talking about this particular piece. Later in the meeting, we do, you know, I do propose to have somebody lease to live in one of the homes, just so we don't have any vandalism or anything of that nature, it goes on on the property. Um, until, until we decide what we want to do with the property, but it is a long-term purchase, this is a generational purchase, and I'm, I'm proud of y'all for, for identifying this property. But, um, if anybody needs any additional documents, I'll have those documents, we can email those to you as well before, before we sign anything tonight, assuming that y'all are in good shape and everything.
And just to be clear on the appraisals, one was above and one was much more above, correct? Right, okay. Anybody else? Still nothing, Tom, right? Um, okay. All right, so, uh, with that, um, we're on to our next public hearing. And I think maybe Ginger fix the sound system if y'all need to adjust how you're doing the meeting. Whenever you're ready, Sharon.
Yes, Mayor, item number six is a first read, an ordinance submitting chapter twenty of the City of Dunwoody Code of Ordinances by adopting a new sign code to replace the current sign code.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, thank you, Sharon, good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council. In person for the first time for me, in, in front of your, uh, particular pleasure. Um, the agenda item also feels exceptionally good to me and to the team kind of in community development, because it brings to its conclusion like a year-long process about the new sign code, where the pandemic happened right in the, at the start of it, then you had to turn over and staff, so we're glad to, you know, be, be able to slowly push it over the, the finish line. Um, just a reminder, like, the goal was to create a new sign code, uh, to support the city's future development, and that's out, I mean, this year, but also into the next decades, uh, entirely new code, and that's generally not easy with the sign codes. There's always a conflict in any sign code, because we try to balance the need for expression, and it's a free speech kind of an issue, whether that is like the resident's expression, uh, commercial speech, non-commercial speech, if we think of our places of worship. And then also the community's expectation of an attractive public environment and sort of an, an uncluttered aesthetic in, in the public realm. And then the second goal that we had was that we did not like our current sign ordinance, it was cumbersome to use, it was split up into several different code sections, uh, the new one is, you know, everything is in one place. We think it's easier to use, it's mu- it's much more graphic, which should help us, um, set clear expectation to our community and also make it on our end easier to administrate and easier to enforce the code. Um, to make it this far required the efforts of, of many, many people though, and I want to especially acknowledge those that helped us on a volunteer basis. We had nine code, a nine-member steering committee that provided guidance and input on the general direction of the sign code. Uh, the initial diagnostic, that's, that's part of your package here, uh, was sort of developed especially for the steering committee. And I, I want to mention those community members, members by, by name to, and, and say thank you on, on our behalf as the staff. That's, uh, Renee Louise Rivers, that's Phil Schroder, that's Robert Wit- Robert Wittenstein, that's Sabrina Rahim, John Lundin, Steve Cooper, Heywood Weskett, William Baker, and then our mayor, Lynn Deutsch, also, it was lots of hours, lots of hard work and lots of expertise that was shared. Then we had the planning commission, uh, take, take a, take a hold of, of this document also. They went through it code section by code section, one of the meetings went four hours, they didn't quit until, until ten PM. So big thank you to, also to the planning commission for, for going over this. On the staff side, uh, especially Allegra DeNoyer, who's a sign planner, Madeline Smith, Richard McLeod, who spent time over and over again vetting the code, field testing it to make sure that it works, that we can actually implement it. And then also, uh, want to mention the previous team, uh, because they sometimes are forgotten, but it's sort of John Olson and Richard Hathcock especially that, uh, did a lot of the foundational work for this. And then as you know, like, these heavier lifts, uh, these kind of bigger projects often have a lot of consultants attached to it. Uh, this one is no different, it would not have been possible without the special knowledge and expertise. Um, and, and we had a good team of consultants, was led by Sean Suter of Zonco, who's a well-accomplished planner and attorney, which is important for these type of sign codes. It, oddly enough, tends to be advantageous, uh, to have an attorney involved, but this, we did. And they partnered with, uh, Caleb Rassico of TSW, who you know, because he's worked with us on the Dunwoody Village Code. And he ensured the document would look, um, graphic and as good as it did. graphic and as good as it did, because that's, you know, that's the part that you not want to leave up to the attorneys to design the document for you. And then with this brief introduction, I'd like to pass it on to our lead consultant, Sean Suter, who will give you a brief overview over the code document.
Thank you very much, Paul. That was a great overview of the project. And I'd like to reiterate my thanks to Paul, Richard and all the staff at the city because they did a fantastic job. Usually we don't get that much staff time and involvement on projects. And it's really helpful to get us to a really good product. So thank you to them. Thank you to the steering committee who also put a lot of time in and challenged our thinking and made sure that it, the product was in line with Dunwoody and your, your needs in your city. So thank you for that. I think Paul summarized it really well. I'm just going to run through kind of real quick how we got to where we are today. Give you an overview of the code and how it's laid out. And then I'm available for any questions, assuming hopefully that most, if not all of you have read it or at least paged through it and have some questions or comments. We started with a diagnostic like we do in all of our projects. We start by taking a look at your current code and that's chapter 20. So we review it and, and we audit it based on what our understanding of the city's desires and needs are. What we found is that Dunwoody's sign code is a one size fits all sign code that's trying to be all things to all people in an environment that has just about every type of building and land use that you can imagine. From high rises to single family homes. So there, there are a lot of different sign needs that you have in Dunwoody. And it is a very diverse built environment that you have. So that makes it particularly challenging to regulate signs in, in your city. But that's what we really focused on was custom tailoring this to the specific building types and development patterns in your city so that we made sure that it was customized to that and calibrated to that. What we found was Dunwoody signage currently is predominantly auto oriented. Most single story commercial buildings include a mix of wall signs and monument and other ground mounted signs. Most sign types are located, sized and illuminated to attract the attention of drivers. However, there's increasingly a desire for signs to be oriented and scaled, both to drivers and pedestrians and bicyclists. So one size fits all approach focused on auto orientation isn't necessarily the future of signs. You have to, again, be more all things all people. Within each sign type, we regulate sign fashion, lighting, materials, spaces, surrounds and other features to distinguish one sign from another. And we have to be clear that the sign, city's focus is not on the content of the information or the message contained on the sign. There's been some case law and over the last decade from the United States Supreme Court relative to being content neutral. So everything you see in the code is content neutral. We did run this by your city attorney who gave us lots of comments. So it should be in good stead with Georgia laws as well as federal law. And that's really important when you're regulating commercial messages. We know that a one size fits all sign regulations cannot really be effective in a city of diverse development patterns like Dunwoody. And that the future sign code must be custom tailored, context sensitive, clear, consistent, user friendly and defensible. And that's what we were trying to get to. Our, our conclusions and recommendations reflect, I believe, really closely and really well, this draft sign code. So the sign code currently is not organized in a user friendly intuitive manner. So we worked hard on that along with TSW and staff to make sure that this sign code read well to people who, all people who take in information differently, whether it's by graphics, diagrams and charts or words. All of those are present in the draft. The sign code currently does not effectively incorporate graphics and tables. So we added those. It attempts a one size fits all approach by tying signage dimensions to gross building area, which doesn't necessarily create the best results. It's not a best practice. And so we've revised that. Modern, more common sign terms and standards should be employed. And we've spent a lot of time making sure that the types of signs people desire in the marketplace, the citizens' desire are reflected in this code, whereas currently they're not necessarily. And so we employed a sign menu approach to allow businesses and property owners the flexibility to select the best mix of signage to most effectively achieve their needs, but that is calibrated both by count, size, illumination, materials and all that sort of thing. So you do get some uniformity while also achieving flexibility for your businesses. So that was our general, those were our general recommendations in the diagnostic. We worked with the steering committee and the staff. And we came up over the last year with what is before you tonight, the first reading. And just to give you a sense of some things that I think are important to note, as you can see the graphics in the code, but really important things that weren't necessarily spelled out very clearly in the current code. For example, how do you measure a sign? So if you look at 20 point or 20 dash three of the proposed code, you know, it, it talks very clearly about how to measure sign dimensions. It provides a graphic. And this is for both people building a sign, property owners, business owners, sign companies, whoever might be looking at this code. We wanted to make it as clear as possible and make sure all the terms were defined too. And you can see that in 20 dash three. We also introduced a concept called the vision clearance triangle. This is a really important concept whereby you create a, 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 at an intersection, you create a vision, a, a triangle that's clear so that any signage is not placed in that triangle so that you have safety for both pedestrians and automobiles. So that's also in here in 20 dash four. A lot of things stayed the same as far as general legal requirements and other things that we took a fresh look at. It may not have changed. And so you'll, you'll notice some of the same language in 20 dash five through 20 dash 13. We have a whole section right out of the chute, 20 dash 14 are prohibited and exempt signs. You know, what are we allowing in the city? What are not allowed in the city? So we had lots of discussion around this. Most of them are fairly similar to what is currently prohibited. And you can read through those and ask any questions. Exempt signs also, you know, fairly similar to what's exempt now. But we do allow for some things like a temporary banner sign for a new business, you know, 60 days prior to the installation of that permanent sign. So that, that's important. And there are a number of other things in here. The big, one of the big things we addressed are yard signs because in residential areas, that's a, a, a big issue of concern and interest from residents is, you know, how many yard signs can I have? How big can they be? Where can they be placed? How long can they be put up for? So there are sections on yard signs which are generally exempt. You don't need to get them, come get a permit for your, you know, small yard sign, but there are regulations around that. So you'll see that in a number of these that it says, you know, it's exempt, but there are regulations that are applicable. So see those to make sure that you're in compliance. We've defined all the sign terms like we talked about, modern and cleaned up definitions. And then in 2017, we defined sign types. So, you know, we thought making a sign menu here are the sign types that are generally going to be allowed in various districts throughout the city. And we've defined those both with words and graphics that were prepared by TSW. And then we also modernized the gasoline station pump island signs that are currently in your code to address EV charging stations. So that's something that's future. It's here and now, but we don't know what gasoline stations are going to be in, in five, 10, 15 years. So we wanted to make sure that we included a, a concept around electric vehicles.
Sean, where's that, your section that you're reading right now?
I'm sorry. 20 dash 18.
Thank you, sir.
One of the big issues that came up, continue to come up were electronic message centers or changeable copy signs. That is not something that the city allows currently. But it is something that certain land uses or certain areas of the city have asked for, including quasi-public and institutional uses like religious assembly uses and other community centers. Also in the perimeter center overlay district, it's something that's been requested. And so what we did was we defined in section 20 dash 21, a new electronic message center and manual changeable copy section that provides four standards around that. And then as applied to specific signs in different districts, we've capped the size of those. And so that hopefully will, you know, mitigate any concerns. One, it's in a limited, limited parts of, of the city as well as it's being regulated pretty, pretty closely, but also allowing for those who want to get their message out and, and, and to be able to do so in particular parts of town. Sign lighting types, really important concept, really affects the aesthetics of, of the city. And if you've ever spent any time around a sign ordinance or signage, you know, the sign lighting, there are a bunch of different types of it. And so we have identified four different types that are most prominent and common. The direct lighting, as you can see, we've got a example graphic there in 20 dash, I'm sorry, article four. Article four, page 19, internal box lighting, where it's internally lit, shadow halo lighting, which uses the lettering, the shadow of the lettering in the backlighting to create the sign and then indirect lighting like gooseneck lighting or floodlight. And then in article five, we put it all together. So we've set up the menu, the definitions, what's exempt, what's prohibited, all that. So you, you know, if you're reading the code, you should have a really good sense of what's allowed in Dunwoody, what the aesthetic is, what, what the general sign types that, that we're going for. And then when you get in article five, you get into the standards by district. So 20 dash 23 sets forth the tables for sign standards in residential districts. And you can see there that we've thought of just about everything from sign, total sign count, sign area, total sign height, sign face materials, sign base materials, illumination types and setback from the right of way. And you'll see that repeated throughout the various districts. And if you flip through, you can see each sign by district and then all of its standards. So if someone comes to the city and says, you know, I want to do a monument sign and I am, I'm building an apartment complex or I'm building a shopping center. I want to know what I can do for a monument sign. Not a shopping center in this regard, sorry. And 20 dash 23 would be an apartment complex. And I want to know what I can do for a monument sign. They literally just have to look at this section and it should tell them pretty much everything they need to know in order to get a permit to do that and design their sign so that it's in compliance with Dunwoody. And it should be clear enough that, you know, it's self explanatory and it should reduce the number of questions that staff have to answer because of maybe a wordy code or a code that's not clear. So that's really, that's also one of the goals, make it easy for everybody. You can see one of the big issues on, on page 22, I had to do with yard signs. So there, you can't differentiate signs by, well, this is a political sign and that's a real estate sign. And that's a sign that says.
What PDF document are you on right now? Just want to make sure we're on the right PDF name document. Page 22, please, thanks.
Yeah, I'm on 22, but I'm on a June 2021 draft. Council draft number one.
And that it's, yeah, it's on your thing.
And I can share my screen if it.
Thanks.
Yeah, we got it. We got it.
All right. One of the interesting things had to do with yard signs. So like I said, you can't differentiate based on what the sign says. The law is pretty simple. The way I could break it down for you is to say, if you have to read the content on the sign to determine what kind of sign it is, that violates the Reed versus Gilbert case from the United States Supreme Court. So we've went to painstaking efforts to make sure that this code was content neutral. And so, and you, you can't say, well, you can have one real estate sign. Well, how do you know it's a real estate sign? You have to look at the sign, right? And read it. Can't do that. So we have small yard signs defined, large yard signs defined. And how many you can have and what the total area per square, per lot and total area per sign, all those kinds of standards are set forth in the limited duration signs in each of the districts. So that's something that is new and I think is really important to understand. We could talk more about if you have questions about. We do the same thing. Like I said, we, you know, set, set forth the, the sign standards for all the districts. So we do the same thing in 20 dash 24 with the office districts. And, you know, that's tricky because sometimes you have a single tenant building, sometime you have a multi-tenant building. And Dunwoody, you have high rise buildings, mid-rise buildings, low rise buildings, single story buildings, all within the office district. So we had to come up with a, a way to measure all of this. We have, we do have a high rise sign provision in here. And I know Paul's going to show you some graphics visually in, when I'm finished, so you can visualize this a little bit better. Same with the commercial and industrial districts. And then obviously we want to treat unique places different. Can't treat everything the same to say, you know, well, you're a commercial, so you're going to fall within the commercial. Well, and the perimeter center is a very unique development pattern within Dunwoody. And so we've created perimeter center signage regulations and standards. And I think hopefully that will work really well for that important district. And you can see that as you flip through, we've tried to create one of the signs that's new in Dunwoody that was once prohibited, that we're proposing to add in a very limited circumstances in the perimeter center would be a roof sign. This is a type of sign that's become more popular again. And you, you probably have seen examples in nearby communities. And so a very limited tasteful, tastefully scaled roof sign is something that could be allowed in the perimeter center. And then in 20 dash 28, we address specifically quasi-public and institutional uses. These are uses that show up in multiple different zoning districts, but are unique in those districts. So it's very hard to treat a religious assembly, a church synagogue, whatever, the same as a single family residential subdivision, just because it might be in a residential area, right? So we, we got a lot of feedback that, hey, you know, we're a religious institution or a community center or something. And we need to have our message out there. We need to have some signage to tell people we exist. So we created a special section on that with building entrance wall and monument signs. And that does allow for a limited amount of changeable copy, either electronic message center or a manual changeable copy with those channel letters you would put on the sign. Up to 40% of the signs, so 60% of the signs can be static, 40% of the sign will be changeable. The remainder of the code are legal provisions relative to non-conformities, administration procedures and not huge changes there, some cleanup and all reviewed by your city attorney. So that's just a brief overview. Obviously look forward to hearing your questions and I'll turn it back to Paul. Thank you.
John, can I ask a question, please?
Yes.
Sorry.
So we had the public hearing and then is that okay? That's how we've been doing it. Thanks. Okay, and I think we still have more staff presentation.
Yes. And I'll keep this one brief. Let me share my screen, but it's especially targeted at those of us kind of who like who like a little bit of sort of, one more graphic people with an easier time to picture the island. picture the islands, I think. But never mind that, but either way, you see, you see the images, right?
Yes.
And I want to show sort of some of the impacts that the code will have based on, and this is specifically targeted to the commercial kind of properties, because for those, the, the likely impact will be the highest because it is for that transitioning from sort of a traditional suburban car-oriented kind of development pattern, where buildings are set far back behind the parking lot towards kind of a more urban format, where buildings are more and more intended to be close to the street. And, and that will have to change signage, kind of how signage interacts with pedestrians and other users than, than just cars. It's trying to find that balance. The big caveat here is like any signs that are existing are existing. So like all these big monuments outside, that they're not going anywhere with this code. So the change will not be drastic, it'll be sort of subtle over time. Now, want to show you a few examples, like these are building signs or wall signs in the shopping center right down the road here. You can see very large building signs on these small suites. And they would likely come down in size with the new code. So this is not to scale, this is something that we started internally, so we could try it out, so we could picture it, we could field test it. So this is approximately how these building signs would look at on, on commercial suites. So this is what we're seeing in practice here is like this cap of 10% of the building facade. So they'll be proportional to the facade, the bigger the facade, the bigger the sign, which is not how we do it currently. So we're having this sort of ratio between sign and facade. So these buildings, especially like the one on the left, like with the windows, that one probably have to come down in size a bit. These are sort of bigger retail suites, this is the shopping center down in Hammond's, sort of larger retail suites. And here's where this sort of cap comes into play, like so you, you can see in the code, if you want to try it out and see for yourself, we have like 10% of the facade area with a cap of up to 120 square feet. So the bigger the storefront gets, like the signs cap out at some point, so 120 square feet. Based on that would be the maximum. And that's like the mattress from down there is a sign that would probably be roughly 120 square feet. And this is approximately how that would look. So that even if the beauty mall up top is bigger, the sign wouldn't get bigger anymore at those. With one exception, and that's your real big box stores, and that's on suggestion by the planning commission. And it's to accommodate these sort of very big stores that are also less likely to change, like that, that development type, that development format, you know, is probably here to stay to an extent. This is like the target sign down at the Ashford, Ashford Lane Shopping Center. And there's a separate 180 square foot cap for buildings that are over 30,000 square feet. So it's your Target, your Walmart, your Best Buy and Home Depot, kind of like those larger, those larger tenants, they would get signs up to 180 square feet, which is if I sort of toggle back and forth a little bit, this one would probably stay approximately similar in dimensions. But it's like, you know, some of these stores, you know, kind of, and you can maybe after this meeting go out for yourself and, and take a look what, what this new code would do. And then the second, the second big change would be for monument signs. And I'll show a few examples of those to this perimeter, perimeter mall sign. And this one would probably stay about the same. This is approximately the size that new monument signs in the city would be. So more or less, if you look at that sign, approximately that's the size of monument signs should the code be adopted. The, the Meridian sign also in perimeter center is a bit too tall. So this would come in, this would violate the maximum sign height of six feet. So it would be like a tall person, that's, that's approximately how tall these signs could go. This one is too tall, so it would have to come down, potentially become not a vertically oriented sign, but a horizontal oriented sign. And then the second item is like this sign pace area that you see in the code coming up. And that's sort of the entire message of the sign, that's that dimension from one corner to the other. And this one is, would also have to come down a little bit. For this one, of course, they have space, they could just compress it and get the same message on there. But, but overall, again, to give you an approximate feeling for what this would do. And then these sort of very, very tall signs, and this is not even the tallest we have, like these very big signs we have in our commercial districts. And, and they would sort of die, die out over time, like they are really the ones that couldn't, that couldn't be created new. Again, sort of this one, much too tall, sort of like the, the height cap of six feet would come into play. And then this one is also too big for the, for the sign area. And this would have to come down substantially. We have included, well, knowing that we have a lot of these big signs and, and they're not going anywhere. And we want people, if they, you know, screws up the shopping center and they want to readjust the signs to fit the look of the new center, we included language in there that makes that possible. So people can go in, people can exchange panels, people can update the lighting with a modern lighting type. Those things are possible, but any new development in the city would not get signs of this size anymore. And any questions you may have, Sean is available, we are available. And with that, we are concluding the staff presentation.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing unless I see any objection. Seeing none, the public hearing is open. I will first start with anyone who is for this revised sign ordinance to speak. I see no one here. Ginger, can you start, check online, please?
If you would like to speak for the sign ordinance, please raise your hand in the Zoom application. I see no hands raised at this time.
Okay, if you would like to speak against the sign ordinance changes or the proposed new sign ordinance. I don't see anyone here. Ginger, can you check?
If you would like to speak against, please raise your hand in the Zoom application. I see no hands raised at this time.
All right, so with that, unless I see an objection, I will close the public hearing. And now council can ask questions and comments. Paul, you probably just want to come back up here, just guessing. Go ahead, John.
Thank you for your presentation. My questions really revolve around pole signs and LED signs. I was looking in section 1214, in the sense the movable, you know, movable signs, those are the LED signs, is that correct? Is that what is that intention?
I'm sorry, what section?
20-14 prohibited signs.
Okay, prohibited signs, yeah, pole signs and pylon signs currently are in your code. So we have changed that to being prohibited. That's a national trend, except for wayfinding signs. And those are the small ones we have defined, freestanding signs. We also have those defined that have the freestanding hanging panel and temporary banner signs. But all other pole signs and pylon signs would be prohibited in this new code. And you asked about LED?
The LED, the large LED, I'm guessing they're pole signs very close to highways or major thoroughfares. We've basically prohibited them within the city of Dunwoody. And I wanted to, I'm looking at it from the perspective of what you've written in the ordinance to regard those. And are those able to be changed and modified? In that movable font section in 14, you mentioned 2026 as a allowance. I was trying to find the allowances in there. I want to make sure I understand what that says. And I'm just trying to understand large pole signs with LED changeable fonts, you know, messaging and how that is affected by this code.
So existing ones able to remain if there are any, but no new ones. And pole signs would not be permitted or pylon signs. Those would be considered pylon signs off interstate, that would not be permitted. As far as changeable copies go, those are not permitted on any type of sign like that. The only changeable copy, and it wouldn't allow for any sort of flashing or scrolling or any of that kind of thing. You would just, there's a dwell time to the changeable copy that it has to be static for so long. That changeable copy would only be 40% of the signs, those are only in the perimeter and in the associated with quasi-public institutional uses.
Correct, I looked up that section in 27-113, trying to understand what those quasi-public institutional categories are. And I just wanted to understand the commercial aspects, like for example, is the mall an institutional? Would the mall be allowed? And based on my looking at it quickly, I didn't think they were.
No, 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 but the malls in the perimeter overlay, which I believe it is, they would be allowed to have a certain number of changeable copies.
Can you show me that section? I want to read that in particular in the sense of what's in the perimeter and what's allowed in the sense of the changeable copy.
Yes, so that is in, perimeter is generally a 2020, 20-26.
Right, I was, I just couldn't find it. I'm scrolling through it, I want to understand exactly what we're allowing.
Sure, and then let me find it myself here, let's see. So that has to do with monument signs. And so it's under EMC, so 20-26, a monument sign in EMC, that's Electronic Message Center, that's the.
Okay, so it's only for monuments only?
Correct.
Okay, again, my concern is large pole signs or large signs, but not.
Monument, not permitted anymore.
All right, let me get to monument, make sure I understand it, read it. All right, so monuments, the very top one in 2026.
Correct.
EMC maximum 40% total sign before. Okay, so only 40% of the total sign then is allowed to be electric modified copy?
Correct.
And the EMC is always especially spelled out, so it's only where specifically spelled out in the table, S E M C. That's where it's allowed, in where it's not specifically specified, it's not allowed.
And they can have up to four total monument signs with EMC on, and those are to accommodate their main entrances to the perimeter center.
Okay, and as far as movable copy, the gas station section modifies that aspect. And I think we've taken care of the open signs. I'm trying to think of the other anomalies that we've found in the past. But you've answered my question. My, my main concern is the large-scale LED signs along highways, are they allowed? Are they not allowed? Have we modified anything to affect our, our longstanding history to ensure that those are not allowed where possible? So thank you, I defer, no other questions for me, thank you.
Joe, sorry.
Yeah, so I wanted to talk about it's, it's the building mounted signs. It's under projecting blade signs, there's a couple of different kinds. You've got a freestanding hanging sign, then there's a building mounted sign. You started off the presentation talking about, i.e. pedestrian oriented and so on. What I, what I like, like that sign, sign, the size, I'm sorry, sign, size visualization PDF that Paul just showed. So I'm looking at that right now, that photo is a auto-oriented photo. So if I'm, I'm walking as a pedestrian under there, I don't know what those shops are, right? So I, I want to go back to where you talk about pedestrian, regardless of whether it's an office district, I'm, I'm looking at the type of district, right? I'm talking about retail shopping, right? But that's under our, you know, office, et cetera, 2024, whatever. So where do we either encourage or mandate, this is a multi-question here, where do we say, okay, you know what? Okay, there's, there's the auto-centric sign, but we also would like you to put a building mounted sign, part, part A. And then part B is, can it be a freehand, freestanding hanging sign mounted to a building? Right now it says it's a bill, it's secure, it's solid. Can you have a decorative, you know, a mast with a nice decorative art? So, you know, if you start walking around, and I'm not saying going back to Europe, I, I can go do a Google search, I come back in the morning, give you a whole bunch of pictures of nice art, it looks great and it's inviting. And this is their, their known cool little logo and sign. But it's, it's maybe hanging though, it might be freestanding. So how does that work right now? If I want a hanging sign by a couple of chains that dangles and, and a pedestrian can see it, walking, walking along there as they look in front of the storefront, would that work today in this code that you're proposing? So are you specifically mentioning in the retail, so that when you're walking down the sidewalk, you can see, you don't have to look up at the wall, right? That's the idea, that, that might work for vehicular passing by. But if you're walking, you can't necessarily see it. So a projecting sign is what we would call the type of sign that you're describing, or a blade sign that uses both terms. We simply say that the projecting sign has to have a metal fastening to the structure with a wood or metal sign face. It can be illuminated as well in, in, in indirect or direct or shadow halo manner. So we don't mandate it. But what we've said in here is that that is one of the sign types that you can have in the office districts. I'm not sure where all the retail is located, if it's in, it's also in the C districts, I believe. And we also allow those there in the, in the commercial districts. You guys have a lot of districts, so Dunwoody, I believe as well. But yes, we don't mandate it, it is one sign type that is allowed. So, so back to the just triple verification, you know, you've got this, where is it? The one that is the freestanding, I'm looking at this freestanding hanging sign, right? So can, can that be mounted as a wall, you know? Can, can they do that? Yeah, so that, if, if it didn't have the pole and it was just a mount, that would be considered the blade sign. Now, we don't, we don't say how, we don't get into the details about, you know, you must have a wrought iron decorative mast or anything like that. We just say attached by a metal attachment to give people flexibility on that.
Right. Okay, so that is possible, then, that's doable. But then do we encourage or promote, how do we encourage or in our code, this is a sign, but now it's a different part of our code? Of saying, okay, we, we, we want you to put those signs in so pedestrians can see where, where your store is.
And that's, that's kind of the challenge of writing a code. I think that's what, what Sean said, that's the challenge of writing a code for Dunwoody. Because we have to code both for what's existing for the businesses, because whenever a new tenant comes in, in one of our existing shopping centers, the same code needs to provide them kind of signage option that work for them. So in, in the way we did it, decided to do it, was like through this menu, kind of where, you know, places could identify the correct type that fits sort of their urban design or their business model. So if I'm building a new commercial building in the village that's out oriented to the street and I have sort of my entertainment district, you know, I have people, then I think people will pick those sign types, similar kind of to how it already has like those freestanding hanging signs up there. Or at least they have the option to pick those sign types. And we hope that sort of organically, that that develops into, or that, that supports sort of the different urban design types in the city.
Hope is not a method, as I was told by a two-star general during the invasion of Iraq. So we're just hoping right now that they would put the blade signs up in new, new builds. If it's a brand-new build, if it's something brand-new, high street, I guess that's already granted, but.
Yeah, we, we can't essentially tell the store what type of sign they have to have.
Put a blade sign, can't say do blade sign.
Recommend it, but we can't require.
But, but in most retail environments like that these days, they are using blade signs or something-ish. Blade signs or something ish, I don't know, like the villages.
Correct.
Right, right.
I think it probably redeveloped, they come closer to the street. It'll make better sense to them.
Right. And in a in a situation where they need rezonings, we can put on conditions like that, yeah, right.
Okay.
Yeah, it's challenging um, to code to every possible scenario, especially in places diverse. A building stock has done what he said, and we if we tried that, we'd be essentially a thousand pages longer than so. It uh, we're trying to provide that uh, those parameters, but also allow the flexibility. So in that example, Dunwoody Village, if that that's an outlaw, let's say, and it has a pedestrian orientation on one side, the vehicular orientation on the other. Then um, you could do a more vehicular focused sign on one side. Cause you get to pick two, and then more of a pedestrian sign on the other side, whereas now you can do that. So that gives you some flexibility. Now, you do have to trust the market a little bit, um, that they're gonna, you know, want to do what's best for their business.
Yep, just like I trust them to put some flowers up and some holiday decorations up during this year and all sorts of stuff.
Understood, yeah.
Stacy.
So I have a concern and I just kind of want to bring it up to the ten to the council too, and that is with the quasi industrial use. Um, and is defined in section twenty seven one thirteen, which is fine, except that it includes. All our neighborhood swim tennis clubs, so all of a sudden in the middle of a neighborhood, we can have an electronic sign. Because it's a quasi industrial or quasi institutional, so I just, are we going to be okay with that if? Village mill decides to put up a new sign and it's this much bigger and it's a and it's and EMC is allowed. Just, or an in-home daycare is awesome, so your next door neighbor is now allowed a monument sign with EMC.
Now we gotta fix that.
So, so I, as I'm sitting up here, I was kind of thinking this problem, and I'm tossing now out to Richard and Paul. Could we, with the quasi institutional, could we attach an acreage to it? Could we say, yes, it's twenty seven one thirteen, but it's only points A through D or whatever?
I would rather define it by use type, for example, institutional would be um, churches.
That legal, are we safer with acreage? I'm asked, I mean, I you don't have to answer us today, but why don't you come back? Clearly that needs a solution.
I think.
And so just come back to us with, because I don't know if you can regulate, I think we just have to be careful.
Can regulate by land use.
Yes, but if they're all considered the same land use, so just, yeah, just come back to us with a solution, please. Go ahead, John.
One of the issues might be in the sense that if it's that institutional, but it's in a zone residential unit. We might be able to regulate it more if it's not in a zone, if it's not. If it's not zoned residential, maybe we can. I guess the issue is that both churches, all church, all churches.
And I think the J is.
The swing swim tennis is are both single family residential.
Right.
So that's not going to open, never mind.
If you, we're not, we don't solve it tonight, if you'll just come back to us, is that all? Uh, Tom.
I also want to say, thank you, thank you, thank you for putting all the visual examples of signs. I needed that so much, and I really appreciate the extra time that I put in into it. Thank you.
Okay, Tom.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks. Uh, yeah, I just want to um, take what Stacy just said. Thank you for all the visual stuff. Uh, all the visual representations in there, I think it's very helpful. And I do want to thank staff and everyone that's been involved in putting this together. This has been a long process. Uh, and a very important one, so I just wanted to thank everyone for that. I did have one question on the residential, I just want to clarify in section twenty three. Um, where we, so bat banners of any type are prohibited in a residential except for on an entrance wall, is that correct? So the only the only way you could hang a banner in residential would be on an entrance wall, that's the only place that would be allowed?
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. If if a subdivision did not have, they can now build a monument. If, but they could not put, you know, those, uh, you know, that we see a lot, the graduation banners and stuff. Uh, unless they actually had a monument wall at their near.
I'm sorry.
Can we, he wants to know, I'll just, because you kind of fell apart there, Tom, but I think what he's asking is that if an if a neighborhood. Has no monument at the front or the back, does that mean they cannot put a banner up?
The, yeah, there wouldn't be any freestanding banners uh, allowed for residential subdivisions.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, as, because that's how I read it, I just wanted to be sure, thank you.
Is that it, Tom? You more?
Uh, yes, yeah, yeah, but that's it for now, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Pam.
Um, this would, I guess, be in the category of um, temporary, and I'm thinking around holiday time with windows. If we ever through our arts commission ever wanted to do um, holiday decorating, painted windows. And I mean the whole window, you know, like you used to see back, you know, in old movies, really we paint windows, you know, Halloween, Christmas, so on and so forth. Um, would that be allowed to cover a whole window with paint?
Yes, yes, it would, and we already had some cases going through the arts commission. So if something is considered art by the commission, then it's not a sign, and it's not regulated by this anymore.
Thank you.
But does it have to go through the commission to get for holiday?
So it it has to go through the through the commission for that. Otherwise, it's a sign, because we cannot distinguish by by content, right? So what what for one of you is like a holiday decoration, we cannot distinguish from the Coca-Cola company putting a similar sized thing up.
But, okay. Right, because they could just approve a bunch at once.
Right, like during the holiday season, you know, you do Hanukkah and Christmas and Kwanzaa and whatever, right, Halloween.
Can I get to, I'm gonna go down, Jim, do you have anything? Yeah, sorry.
I got a couple of things. Um, so John's comment about pole mounted signs and Lynn's comment about being very careful. Brings back memories of billboard lawsuits. And the question I have got for staff and 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 as Lynn said, I don't need an answer to this tonight, and I'm not trying. To spend money we don't need to spend, but I want us to consider very carefully, and and this question is for. Eric, Bill, Richard, Paul, everybody involved. You know, should we have an outside sign attorney give us, you know, sort of yet another opinion on all this stuff? You know, whether it be Kelly Hundley, who we've used in the past, or someone like him, kind of have a last look at all this stuff. Just to see if there's anything we missed, because we got to be careful on this stuff. And and again, I don't need an answer right here, right now, but talk about that and and and. Well, you know, take appropriate action, you know, and again, I don't, if if we don't need to spend the money, I'm all all about not spending the money, but if. Um, you know, if we should do that last and best on something that's going to be this impactful for as long as I think this will. Um, it it might be, you know, penny wise, or it might be a, you know. Um, a stitch in time, um, saving nine, um, when it comes to uh, legal fees down the road. If we get into any kind of a lawsuit over our sign, that's 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 all I'm trying to bring up. Richard, do you have a comment?
Yes, and I believe we already have, because I believe they already used Kelly Hunt link to review it.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, perfect, lovely. Um, can somebody walk me through what is allowed and not allowed? On big political signs on residential lots, and are are we constraining that to the? You know, as far as we can with, you know. You know, while keeping one A and, you know. Front of mind.
So. Yeah, I can, I can address that. That was one of the things we had to really work through is we can't, you know. Can no longer say it's a political sign versus any other kind of sign, right? So, um, so what we've done is we've created a category for small yard signs. Uh, that would be uh, a total of three feet high maximum with six square feet. So like a two by three sign, three feet high.
Yes, I guess, yeah.
Yep, and uh, total of thirty square feet per lot, so this is time, place and manner. You know, that are the lawful kind of ways to regulate, you know, yard signs, and so. Uh, thirty square feet, so you would have essentially five maximum that you could put up total. Um, and uh, metal or wood supports vinyl, plastic metal would face, so any of those types of signs, but no illumination on them. That's not permitted, and they have to be three feet minimum from the right away. Um, so that's how we've addressed uh, all those types of uh, little yard signs.
All right, thank you. And and well, I guess, follow up, you know, I guess. You know, why, why five or or thirty square feet, why not twelve or fifteen, you know, you you get two or three. You know, versus five, I I'm just curious, you know, is 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 there legal precedent out there that says you got to have a little bit more than?
Not necessarily, uh, that's a value judgment, just based on um, you know, what you think uh, is going to be tolerated in your particular community. Um, you know, if you said maximum of two, are you gonna hear a lot of pushback on that? So we tried to be, you know, generous, but also uh, real, you know, reasonable with with the um, with the count and the size.
I think I was on those discussions, and I think the idea was that some elections, you have lots of candidates, and you know. That was the thing, go ahead.
And then someone like in the, if you look at section uh, twenty dash twelve. There's also specific language still uh, between the date of qualification and final determination on each ballot issue or candidate. Uh, unlimited number of yard signs in residential zone lots, so there's sort of an additional qualifier. Uh, in those time periods.
So that's, so basically what we're saying is, close to the election, you can have a whole slew. But you can have up to five, even if you're not close to an election?
Five political signs or five, we can't regulate content, right?
Five yard signs total, up to thirty.
Yeah, I didn't say they were political, I just said they were close to an election.
Confused, because I thought we had discussed, I I sometimes had to step out of meetings, I know that. And so I'm, I thought we had discussed a limit of, but maybe we can't do that, that's probably worth a little more conversation.
I think so too.
Another real quick question, kind of along these lines. Does a HOA neighborhood, a ma- neighborhood with the HOA, would they trump the city in these?
Yes.
Yard signs, okay, I was just making sure that's still the same, okay.
Yeah, there aren't many of those left in Dunwoody, but.
But but we don't enforce that, so.
Right, they HOA has to force it themselves. So. Uh, John, you had other question?
I just want to make sure we're talking about window signs, there's been a number of issues, and I want to make sure we read it, uh, twenty four inches if staff can explain. I guess uh, the window signs and what's allowable, what's not, and if it doesn't have to be attached to the window. If there's there's a number of. Number of issues with window signs, and I want to make sure I get a staff report on what's allowed, what's not.
Yeah, that that twenty four inches is, if you have, let's say, like a a storefront window. And you have, you can look into the store, and then somewhere in the store, they have um, a sign that says. Uh, Macy's great men's suits, kind of um, somewhere we have to draw the line. What's still a window sign and what's already a sign internal of the store, and those are exempt from the code. So anything inside is fine, anything at the building. And we say twenty four inches behind the window is still a window sign, even if it's on the inside of the building. So it's so people can just put in a drywall immediately to the inside of the window and then put a sign up and then say. Oh, this is, this is inside the building, it's not a window sign anymore.
All right, so that twenty four inches, then, if as long as that, any signage inside is more than twenty four inches away from the painted glass.
Then it's not a sign anymore under this code.
Okay, is there any requirement then as far as looking? I'm guessing it's the signage, but it's also some of the safety aspect of looking into the facilities in the buildings. I guess there's no requirement for any of that.
Yeah, that's, that's not, I mean, we have some of this related in parts of our zoning code. We have sort of transparency standards in the perimeter center zoning districts, and we enforce those separately, uh, which. Comes up quite a bit, and we we do require transparency to mean that you can look into the building.
And as far as. Watching this, once this gets passed and anything that's in place now is grandfathered, but. You know, the price of whatever is on the window is going to change, and they're going to need to be updated. How does that, how is code enforcement going to implement policy changes? Are you going to document what's on every window to look, I'm I'm just trying to think long term, how do we, how is this enforceable?
And it's, I think, uh, possibly Joe Hirsch common kind of that he made earlier.
Yeah.
Also, that's, that's, that's consistent challenge, because the, the um, businesses in the city are. Sometimes aware of this code, sometimes legitimately not aware, and and they're just doing kind of, they are messaging to to the public. Um, so we rely on on the community kind of to, we we can't be in any place at once and. Um, we're we're not doing sort of, you know, we're not seeking out kind of violations from our code enforcement team. So for that, we rely on the community to bring these things to our attention, and then. You know, we'll have to investigate each case individually and then try to find a solution often. You know, typically, if something comes up, we had it at like the medical office building up on. In the village, people let us know pretty quickly, we go out, we bring it to the attention, and it's. These things can be resolved relatively quickly. In other parts of the city, we probably don't have the same sort of peer kind of enforcement pressure, if you will. Not not a perfect solution, unfortunately.
And I guess just one more question for me, if somebody, if a business wants to black out their windows. That's not, is that a sign? In other words, they want to totally blackout and paint over their sign, their windows. Is that still a window at that point? Or does it become a glass wall that's can't be seen through?
So certainly in those kind of um, zoning districts where we have those transparency standards. Um, and and those are the only ones where you couldn't do it, like in in many places. You you could do it in in districts with transparency standards, you could not do that, because it requires you to be able to look into the building. Know whether that's a sign, um, Sean, I might. I might try to get your attention if someone paints the window black, I'm not sure.
I don't think that would be a sign, um, it would fall under the definition of a sign. If it didn't have any messaging at all, it was just a black paint.
All right, I'm just aware that's out there too, so I'm just trying to understand the requirements of the twenty four inches, so, all right, thank you, no other questions.
Joe.
Uh, John brought up some comments about um, some LED, and there's some different different conversations. Are you familiar in Buckhead, Peachtree Road where the Buckhead Triangle is, Peachtree Road, East Paces Ferry, West Paces Ferry. Do a Google Street View there, um, they took a a building and they put, they covered the walls up and they built behind it. They had glass, and then right behind it, they did a, basically, they got around the city of Atlanta's sign ordinance. And they basically have a big electronic billboard there on both sides of that, and it, you know, made a huge big fit. Um, but they found, you know, they got around it. Um, are we, is ours current sign ordinance gonna, would would we not? Would that disallow? That could not happen with our current ordinance, someone coming in, putting a glass, and then behind it having. Electronic imaging and signs showing up.
That's what, that it's not notoriously challenging, I mean, that there's a lot of. You know, if an electronic store has TVs out that point towards the 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 window, you know, it's a lot of things that are kind of similar. And I think we're trying to find a balance here, but well, we might have to play catch up, kind of if some things take a hold and.
You all know what I'm talking about, you know that, Richard, yeah. And then I just wanted to kind of go back to, whether it's going back to the arts, public arts commission, so on. Again, this is a first read, but the idea where during a holiday, whatever time, if you want to have the elementary kids come over to your shop and decorate it. I don't want to have them to go through the arts commission and do that, so I'd like to have some kind of. Let's let's lessen the bureaucracy on that if possible. I don't know if you guys can think about ways of getting around that.
Yeah, and not, not, not everything is a sign, like if you have a display at a store, kind of you, you show your goods. It's not a sign that's like, you know, just displaying goods and. And and some of these kind of, if you think about like a traditional storefront, and they have sort of a a display behind it. That's not a sign, that's what we want, kind of a city for visual interest and so forth, that that we wouldn't regulate as a sign. If if that is kind of what you're speaking about, kind of like typical kind of downtown holiday display in a.
The wall, no, the 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 glass itself of.
If there's some legal challenge. There's some legal challenges, so we have to. That's the challenge. Signs are really, really tricky and. As you just gave the example, there are consequences if we write. So I I'd like Richard or Sean, I'd like to make sure that can't happen in Dunwoody. So if we can make sure that we've addressed it as aggressively, I know that Atlanta actually doesn't have very many strict sign rules. And so as I understand it, and so if we could just make sure that we're doing what we need to do to keep that from happening here. So. Right. Anybody else? I just want to make sure that in here are the rules about maintaining signs. Yes, okay. And then the other thing is, is that like the examples you gave, which were good of what things would be allowed. Just a reminder that to the public, if anybody's watching, that what's up can stay because they're grandfathered in. It's only when certain things happen, so, okay. Alright, we will see you in a few weeks with the second read. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Mayor, the next item is a resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Dunwoody, Georgia to fix the ad valorem tax rate of the city of Dunwoody for fiscal year 2021 and for other purposes.
Hello again. This is the first required reading of three public hearings and it is for tax increase. But even though it is, most homeowners won't fill it because of the freeze. It goes along with your homesteaded properties and if you did have improvements, that would be in there as well, but. Anyway, so there are state requirements that there's three public hearings. So this is the first one. The next two will be on June twenty eighth. They'll be at eight AM and six PM. We also are required to have two advertisements for the tax increase. And the five year history, you see that in your packets. And a press, the press releases as well, and all of these are requirements. Based on the state OCGA section forty eight, one, nine, and that's the taxpayer bill of rights.
Okay. That's your presentation. Okay. I'm going to open the public hearing. Unless I see an objection. Seeing no objection, I, this public hearing is open. We will open the floor for public comments in favor of this item. Hold on, my machine is messing up. It will have ten minutes. Anyone here to speak in favor? I see none. Ginger, can you check online, please?
If you would like to speak in favor, please raise your hand in the Zoom application. I see no hands raised at this.
Thank you. And then anyone who would like to speak in opposition. I see no one here. And Ginger, can you check online?
If you would like to speak in opposition, please raise your hand in the Zoom app. I see no hands raised at this time.
Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing and have questions and comments from council. I'll start at the other end. Jim, you have anything? Pam.
Keeping it level.
Right, Pam. Pam, nothing. Anybody? Tom? Yeah, so just want to review what we said. Which is that this is the same. There's no actual miller rate increase. All homeowners in Dunwoody have the ability for a freeze. For those long term homeowners, it was in two thousand nine. And everybody else is when they buy their house. Is that correct? How does that work if you've?
Well, the new ones coming in, depending on the value.
Yeah.
You know, some of, some people are tearing them down and building them back.
Right. It resets when you buy a new a house, correct? Like the new owner, it could reset if the cab reassesses. And it's, but just a reminder again, it's just your city and your county taxes. It's not your school taxes. Go ahead, John.
And related to that, if we can get an update, what if I put an addition on and I pull a bunch of permits? And then at some point, do I get reassessed and how does that work with the freeze? Is there anybody that can give me an update on as far as how that works? Anything you do where you add new construction to it allows for reassessment of value.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. That concludes our public hearings. Consent agenda. Anybody have any questions or comments? Lots of questions in the comments. John?
Council, I'd like to ask that item eight, the approval of the city council minutes of May twenty fourth be deferred to the next meeting. It was not officially part of our packet as of a couple of days ago and wasn't put up on the web until this morning. So I'd ask that item eight be deferred until the next meeting. Other than that. Have no other objections. Thank you.
Okay, Stacy.
Just a question that with, if we approve the consent agenda and the contract amendment. How soon do those park staff? When do they start?
We've already conducted interviews and had preparation for it, so they would start before the end of this month.
Anybody else? Tom, anything? Okay, so I think I need an amended.
Move to approve is amended by council member Henigan.
Second. So moved with the deferral by Councilman Wrightiter, seconded by Councilwoman Tomage. Any further discussion signify by raising your hand. Aye. Alright, Sharon, that passes as amended unanimously. I presume we did everything we needed to do for eight, right?
I defer to Sharon and the attorneys.
Right.
That's.
Sharon or attorneys, do we need to do something with eight or was that enough?
Whoever gets unmuted first, that is enough, Mayor.
Okay, that's enough. Okay, thank you. Alright. Alright, now we're on to the business items. Sharon, I think you will lead us through this.
Mayor, I will read the resolution again. A resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Dunwoody authorizing, among other things, the execution of documents relating to the acquisition of land for parks and recreation.
And counsel, this is the item that was related to the first public hearing that we had earlier. Your approval of this item would include. The actual entering into an agreement with the Georgia Municipal Association for the leaseback of the Vermac property. Georgia Municipal Association's purchase of the property. Along with choosing Zion's Bank at two point oh six percent interest for a fifteen year term with no penalty for prepayment. And all of that would be approved tonight with the council's vote.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Let me know by raising your hand or something. I don't see any. We, this is an item, an action item.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Tom.
Second.
Sorry. Sorry. I heard Tom make the motion. Who seconded it? Oh, John seconded it. Alright, any further discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor signify by aye or raising your hand. Sharon, that's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, would you like me to read the next item?
Please.
Okay, number thirteen, under business items is a contract amendment for the design services of the park at Perimeter Center East Brent Walker.
Evening, man, council. We discussed this. On September twenty fourth, council meeting, I do apologize that it was at the last council meeting. About the change order for the addition of the splash pad at the perimeter center park. Property that we're in design on right now. Councilman Lambert had a couple of questions about location of the pump house. I reached out to the design team and they gave me the reasons why they located it where they did in the site plan. You can see those in the memo. There was a conflict with the electrical transformer in that location. There was also a sewer line. Manhole in that location and they felt that that where they placed it in the site plan that's in your pocket, they get hot in the vegetation. After further discussing it, they felt like they could move the pump house and join it with the bathroom facility. If they can determine that it is a public sewer line there, we can move the transformer. So as part of the change order, they will look into that and all those things are possible. They will move the pump house and make it part of the bathroom assembly building. They just wanted to go ahead and make sure that the change order was approved before they went down that road. To make the changes in the site plan.
Okay, any other, any questions? Go ahead.
I'll just make the comment that I had a number of people excited about a water feature and they wanted to know where it was and when is it going to open and how fast is it going to happen? Because little kids like water features, so kudos to, you know, making this happen. So thank you.
Yep, same experience the other night. Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Stacy, second by John. Any further discussion or comments? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor signify by aye or raise your hand. It's unanimous, Sharon. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Yeah.
Mayor, item number fourteen is a second read of an ordinance to amend chapter four alcoholic beverages. Of the city of Dunwoody code of ordinances to amend regulations for entertainment districts and to define additional entertainment districts.
Okay, I'm unable to properly do this, but I'll go through the changes like you've seen entertainment district, the second read, you've seen it before. I want to focus on just the changes that we made to the ordinance since you last saw it. Number one, like the stickers are back in, so we put this back in and we've done a lot in the background to make sure that they work better than they have in the past. Lot of work with Michael Starling's team. Change number two for Ashford Lane. Slightly different boundaries because the adjacent property owner had reached out to us and was like, can we become part of this district? Just, of course, what we want includes like the new AC hotel. And if we hope to draw these people into the shopping center, frequent the businesses and so forth. And then the Tin Lizzie Restaurant, so there's a change kind of when a district slightly expanded for Ashford Lane. For High Street, also some changes, reducing it like into two phases. And then the wording has slightly changed, nothing that sort of fundamentally should alter the functioning of it. But we had worked with the representatives for High Street until pretty much, I mean, the day off. And and there's a last change that they're proposing to you all that's not part of your package. So should you decide to do so, we would ask you to take a look at this language. I'll keep it up here so you can. Read it out. And this addresses this kind of section four, one, four, three, A. Which right now just says like active construction sites, but they asked like what to be a bit expanded to make clearer what it what it is and. And and we as staff would be happy to accommodate it. I think Mindy Thompson for the the High Street people has endured. Or has been entertained by the proceeding so far, but but she is also able to answer the questions about. About this specific language.
Okay, so now I have to open up. So. With that, unless I see an objection. Oh, no, there's no public hearing. Come back, Paul. You have to come back. Sorry, it's the second read. So whatever changes she wants, you need to tell us because we don't necessarily have public comment in this process.
Yep, so the the change would be, as I mentioned, it's here, so it would be changed to section four. Dash one for three, exceptions to entertainment district.
Wait, wait, slow down. So it's on page what, John?
Oh, they can't see it.
No, it's your.
Okay, let me just try to pull this up one more.
It's not on mine. I only have eight pages on mine. I don't have anything with thirteen pages, I don't think. Hold on.
Can you, can you see my screen now?
Oh, you're because you've got them combined together. You have the whole thing. So I saw it a second ago. It's on page for everybody that's just in there. It's five through eight on the PDF, but we don't have the language they want. Can you share that? Just you can read it to us. You don't have to show us. We're capable. We can probably hear it and understand it. That's fine. We saw Asher Lane on the side of the next slide a second ago.
Okay, then I can read it out for you.
Yes.
So it's section four, dash one, four, three, exceptions to entertainment districts. And that is to read. Within an entertainment district, the regulations in section four, dash one, four, four shall not be applicable to. A. Those portions of an entertainment district that are active construction sites. Those portions of an entertainment district that are active construction sites must be secured. From the remain, from the remainder of the entertainment district by fence or other barrier. And then B, parking garages, whether above or below ground.
Okay. That's so any questions or comments? Go ahead, John.
If you can explain that, I mean, you had the active construction sites already in there. You had the parking garages above or below ground already in there, so you explain the. The new one, explain it to me, please, just the tents, explain the tent situation.
I think he said fence.
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 And Mindy, do you want to speak to?
I think she can.
Just read it one more time.
Yeah, just read it one more time.
That one section.
Slowly.
Okay, those portions of an entertainment district that are active construction sites.
It's already.
Period. Those portions of an entertainment district that are active construction sites must be secured from the remainder of the entertainment district. By fence or other barrier.
And then B, the parking garage stays the same as it was in the ordinance, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So therefore the intent is. During there's construction activity in the area, you can fence off and still have an entertainment district going on inside. Right?
Not inside, but.
Inside the fence.
No, outside.
So I think it, I think the fear was by the by the High Street team. That if there was active construction anywhere on the site, that it would be excluded from the entertainment district. That's not what we intend to do. What we want to do is like, there is an entertainment district, it ought to be safe. Kind of for people not to wander off into construction sites and therefore it to be fenced off.
Right, that's I'm a little.
Okay.
Alright, any, can you unshare your screen, please, before you are we stuck? So, alright, any questions or comments? You okay? Tom has his hands up. I can see him.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, thank you. I just have a a a comment. Well, first of all, I just want to thank everyone for. For being proactive on this and in in getting these entertainment districts in place before these businesses open. I think that's that's a great thing for business and a great thing for the community, so thank you for that. I do, I do have a comment. I just want to ensure that. That the community development team worked with the economic development team to properly educate all of the businesses. Within the district about the ordinance and how it works and how they can participate in this. And and I bring this up because I actually within the past two weeks had a resident come to me. That was at a, was at a business in Dunwoody Village and it's not important for tonight to mention what the business is, but. They tried to get a to go beverage. To go to another establishment within the village. And they were told by the the employee and then the manager that they they weren't allowed to do that. You can't get to go beverages. So I just want to ensure that everybody within these districts is properly educated. Obviously, there there could be, you know, individual staff issues at a at a place, but I want to make sure that. We get ahead of that and make sure that everyone understands what. Uh, what this means and what they're allowed to do uh so that they can take advantage of this. But uh, thanks again to everybody.
Um, and we are working on that. Michael, you can't see him, Tom, but he's nodding his head and we are working on that. And I think there's a role for us too, which we'll discuss as we go down the road with this.
Yeah, I'd be happy to speak to that. So we're in the process of creating the, the signs that go in each business. Rosemary, once she gets back for vacation, will go meet with every business in the district. I think it's going to be an ongoing thing because people do change. But yeah, we're, we're meeting with every business one-on-one to educate them on what they can and can't do.
Thank you.
And I've ordered sixty thousand stickers, so.
Ready.
Perhaps a mayor and council field trip to demonstrate how an entertainment district works.
Right. Joe, you had your hands up. You okay, Stacy? So my only question for Richard or Paul is is that. The fencing thing, now I sound like I'm a little nervous. So how do we make sure, is there language we need to insert or is that covered in the code itself? About fencing because. In general, I mean, even without an out, an entertainment district, we would want the fencing to be secure if people are. Eating at a restaurant a block down or whatever. So what's our requirement? Like what's, go ahead.
Well, normally when uh on commercial projects, they have a six or eight foot fence and you can't get through it. Obviously. Climate, um but um it's meant to keep people out, so.
Pull ball, right? And go ahead, John.
Well, that's where my confusion really comes in. Right now, what we have, what council has in front of us is active construction sites. It's not allowed. So if there's a fence and it's blocked off, the active construction site is everything inside that fence. I guess uh. Somebody is worried that because there's a partial active construction site somewhere on their property. That they're not going to be allowed to do it anywhere else on their property, but that's not the active construction site. The active construction site is only in one corner where it's not going to be allowed. Everything else is. I don't think the modification is needed by my opinion because. It's not the active construction site where they want to do this.
That's why we, we suggested that the first language and uh. What we brought that forward.
Okay, well, if you brought it forward, then so be it, but that's, I'm just trying to understand what you're trying to do, the active construction.
Right. I think it's right. I think that they're worried that some future community development director. That we hope High Street Street gets built soon and quickly and completely, that in, if there's another community development director, they may say, I'm taking it back. Because now you started another phase, right? But I, so I see both sides. Any other thoughts? Any other questions? All right. Yes, please.
Move to approve.
Second.
With the, with the addition of fence, yes.
Okay, moved by Pam, moved by Pam, second by Joe. Any other questions? This is a motion with the amendment. Seeing no other questions, I call the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that passes unanimously, Sharon.
Mayor, the next item on the agenda. Let me catch up with myself here. Is up item number fifteen, approval of the CARES amendment and discovery Dunwoody amendment. Jai Penicky.
Good evening again. Uh, just let everybody know, there is a second round of federal funding coming the city's way and just so that everyone's familiar with all the acronyms that we will be using this year. We have been using CARES and CARES two for the first two uh tranches of money and then now it will be ARC or A R P. So that's the second part. The ARC rules are an interim stage. They're published and they're out there. However, in discussions that we're talking, there's still a lot of unclarity with that. So what we'd like to do is propose a cleanup amendment for your current CARES two funding and kind of pause that and any further action for the next few weeks or next few council meetings. Until we're more familiar and more details on the A R P funding is coming out. So essentially, this is one last minute. I'd like to go through the changes that we're proposing on this. To go category by category, we, uh, all the money budgeted for hazard pay, we expect to be expended and Linda, correct me, it's in the next payroll run. It'll be in the next payroll run for those from uh till the end of June. Uh, the not-for-profit grants, we've spent about uh four hundred thousand of the five fifty or so right now. Five of the agencies have a seventy-five thousand dollar cap and three have fifty thousand. We expect all that to be expended. Uh, let me skip city supplies and services for a second. The small business grants, we've put out about one point nine million of grants to the community. And it was a rounded number off and and what we're going to do is propose moving that small business amount that's still left into other parts of it. The Al Fresco grants, we've spent about twenty-five thousand. We have about a hundred twenty-seven left in that and we also have new things that are being proposed with that. Mr. Starling will talk about it. The entrepreneurial support program is still something we're working on development, so we're going to leave that in there. The tourism reopening, we'll discuss in a second and the contingency is there. So what we've done is we're going to move the amount that was in the small business grants portion and redistribute it into. The tourism grant to do two specific things. Uh, there for the localized destination experiences for meeting planners and the sponsorship and incentive plan, both at twenty-five thousand and a contract with Discover Dunwoody. And like for Michael to talk a little bit about those two things because you're also going to approve that along with this budget.
Jay, thanks, mayor and council. So Discover Dunwoody came back to the city and requested uh these two items. The sponsorship uh incentive plan actually pays um businesses or groups that block large uh amounts of hotel rooms. Actually pay them when they do that, two thousand, three thousand, five thousand dollars, whatever it might be. They've had to pull that back because of of COVID. This will allow them to continue that this year and next year. It's been a very successful program. It landed one of the city's biggest. It's a, it's a matchbox car convention. Didn't know there was such a thing, but that was, it sold out.
I think it was Hot Wheels.
Hot Wheels, yeah, that was a matchbox.
Not, not, not to pick, but, right, but I know.
So, so they use that program to, to help pay for some of the, the uh events and the transportation for that program. So. It's something they think is very, very important. And the other one is a destination experience for meeting planners. This will bring people from out of the state. Here in Dunwoody, they would stay in Dunwoody, they would spend their entire time in Dunwoody, and they think that's another important thing as business picks up. And if you want me to talk about the Al Fresco grant program, um, we are sort of shifting that away from individual businesses. And now we're working with property owners to do larger uh investments and we think we have two or three of those coming forward pretty soon. It, we sort of went through all the businesses who were willing to do it. It's much easier working with the, the actual property owners to get those investments done. Any questions?
Okay, any questions?
I'm excited about that, that last part.
We'll see, yeah. Some, some exciting things are happening. A lot of the property owners are discussing, uh, so keep our fingers crossed.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
I'm excited to get beds and heads and get that hotel tax bill back up.
Right.
Let's do it.
Every month, it's, it's inching out. We're headed in the right direction.
Tom, you okay? Yes, okay. All right. Now he's, the sun went down. Now he's dark. Um, so can, um, I have, this is an action item.
Move to approve.
Second.
Oh, wait. Oh, yeah, no, it is an action item. Sorry. Um, moved to, uh, I didn't hear any of that. Stacy moved and. John, second, sorry. Stacy moved and John second. Um, any further discussion or comments? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, raise your hand or signify by saying aye. Sharon, that's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Before you start, I just have a quick question to Sharon or Bill. This is a first read, but I don't have to do it as a public hearing. Is that correct?
That is correct, mayor.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, moving on to item sixteen. This is a first read. This chapter of the ordinance does not require a public hearing. It's an ordinance to amend chapter four alcoholic beverages of the city of Dunwoody Code of Ordinances to amend regulations for ancillary tastings.
Yep, and this is uh ancillary tastings as in a retail business that sells alcohol can do tastings even though they do not have a consumption on the premise license. Last year, we made changes to our code uh regarding those and then the state uh passed a bill with like very specific standards that conflicted with what we had adjusted. In terms of how often you can do it, what size of um, what size of kind of drinks you can give out. So what this text amendment does is to take the local requirements, since they were less strict than the state requirements. This proposes to take those out entirely, let the state requirements govern, sort of keep it um. Simple in, in our ordinance, not duplicate anything and then behind again when the state changes theirs. So proposes to take those out. And at the same time to allow that there's a companion resolution, which is the next item to ensure that we allow for. Uh, the ancillary tasting of distilled spirits in addition to uh beer and wine as, as we're, as we're currently allowing it. If you have any questions, please do let me know.
Anybody have any questions? Go ahead, Joe.
Paul, have, have our, have the shops been using this? Have they been doing these tastings?
Yes, so we, we have a fair amount of, mostly it's annual licenses, uh, so like grocery stores have it, so they can do uh. Tastings and they just, whenever they extend their uh annual alcohol permit, they also extend this. It's an easy process.
Okay, thanks.
Any questions? None. All right, I call, I need, that's a first read. I do nothing. All right, next. I don't think so. I think it's a resolution. Sharon has to read it.
Yes, mayor, this is a resolution to set fees for ancillary tastings of distilled spirits.
And uh this is sort of the companion uh regulation. This sets a fee of four hundred dollars for an annual tasting permit for distilled spirits. Uh, fifty dollars for a per day tasting permit for distilled spirits. It's sort of roughly in nine that we have for beer and wine, which are. Three hundred dollars for an annual each. So it's a, it's a bit more than for the beer and wine. The daily fee is about the same.
Why? I, I probably should have asked you before the meeting, but why? Why is it a different fee? Does the state require it?
No, liquor is typically like taxed at a much higher rate than beer and wine, beer and wine at a lower rate. Um, distilled spirits at a, at a much higher rate.
Change it. It's been a rough year for restaurants and everybody. Go ahead, John.
Paul, since the first read on uh item number sixteen, there was a first read and this is now setting the fees that we're going to maybe approve at the next meeting. Maybe we should approve the fees at the next meeting.
Yeah, we could, we could push that to the next meeting.
Yeah.
Move to defer.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Yes, I have a discussion. I think we could lower it to three hundred. I don't, I don't, I don't, first of all, I'd love a decillery to come to Dunwoody and if that helps, so be it. And secondly, I don't really, I don't get it, so.
I'm fine with it.
So anyway, does anybody else care?
I'll, I'll go three hundred.
Right, so anyway, so when you bring it back, maybe bring it back at three hundred. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I did not catch who the sec, first, the motion and the second was. They went very quickly.
John and Joe, sorry, and John and Joe, we haven't voted yet. We're getting ready to vote. So it was John made motion, Joe seconded, and then I jumped in, so you couldn't hear.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, um, I call the question on the deferral. Uh, signify by saying aye or raise your hand. Okay, that passes unanimously, Sharon. The deferral, right.
The next item on the agenda, agenda item number eighteen is lease agreement for forty-eight nineteen for Mac Road, Brett Walker.
Thanks, Sharon. The uh property we were purchasing, as Eric mentioned earlier, uh, on Burmec Road has two residential houses on it. Both of them are in good shape, one of them being in very good shape. We'd like to keep it that way until we figure out what we're going to do with the property and. Uh, see if there may be a potential use for those in the future. Uh, with that, we've um discussed having a tenant live in the brick home, the ranch at forty-eight nineteen. Alan Bagdeblossie, also known as AJ, uh, our parks coordinator, has expressed interest in moving into that site. He would be able to get into that uh house no later than August first, so we would be able to have somebody there keeping an eye on the residents. They would also um help maintain the building and of course, the surrounding properties as a parks coordinator, that's part of his job function. And then he would also be a on-call person for the city for public works and parks uh as he would be residing here, would be able to respond quicker. Uh, to on-call services after regular hours, be able to assess the situation better than uh just on the phone with police or whatever. And be able to make the appropriate call as to who to bring out in terms of down trees or any hazards at the parks or in the right of way. So it'd be an added service to us to have that personal call in the city. Uh, we've attached a draft lease for y'all to review tonight. Uh, we, we did make this a business item because we would like to try to get him into the property as soon as possible after closing. With that, I'm in a opinion. Any questions y'all may have?
Does anyone have any questions or comments? Tom, you okay? Do you have anything, Tom? Okay, Jim, Pam, John.
Yeah, Brian, can you just make sure you explain us the financial aspects of it in the sense of the uh fair and equitable price? It's a, just to give us publicly the. Amount of what he's paying and for how much and the due diligence in that aspect. It's not a sweetheart deal in the sense that he's getting it cheap. He's getting it. At a fair and equitable price and part of that is also living there and being part of the city employee doing city business. But if you could explain some of that just publicly.
Sure. So uh, the, the rent will be twelve hundred a month and that will include his utilities, so roughly a thousand dollars for the rent payment, two hundred for the utilities. Utilities will be in the city's name, which is just the easier way to do the transaction. And then we looked at what we have paid in on-call services. For uh after-hours on calls to our triscapes or after-hours right-of-way and park spender. Uh, and it was around eleven, twelve thousand dollars last year. A lot of that time is spent. They get paid from the time the call is made and until they're done. And a lot of times they are um either waiting on-site. For power to be shut off or things like that. So as they're getting, they're sitting there to get paid. So with, with AJ here, he can go out and respond to that. We won't be paying those overtime hours for him to assess the situation, take care of those things. Um, so we took the value of what. Uh, we've been paying in overtime service and we've concluded that there's about a thousand dollars a month uh value there. I did look at rental rates for three-bedroom homes in Dunwoody, kind of around the area. They go for about twenty-two hundred dollars. So that's where we came up with that value of what he'll pay and what his in-service will be uh to rent the house.
Sounds fair and equitable. Thank you. I just want to make sure that was said publicly.
Oh.
Yeah, um, thanks. Also, I think it's just a win-win-win for everybody. That's great that he's going to be there. Totally great. Um, we've got a little pet agreement. Does, does he have a pets?
He does.
Not that I'm worried about it, but.
They're house-trained. He lives in an apartment now.
But it's all good because it's a, you know, obviously, it's, you just need to make sure CYA, right? What they did perfect. Awesome. Thanks.
Stacy.
Um, what do the utilities include? Do we have to put wifi and internet in there or what all?
No, they don't include that. So it'd be gas, water and.
Electric, okay. And then he'll, he'll have to do cable, internet, whatever he wants. Okay.
Yes. Okay.
Move to approve. Second.
Moved by John, second by Joe. Any further discussion? Seeing none, um, I call the question. All in favor signify by saying aye, raise your hand, aye. All right, Sharon, that's unanimous.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
The next item, number nineteen, under business is approval of art easement for five hundred Ashford, uh, Ashwoodie Parkway. Michael Starling.
Thank you, mayor and council. So the public art ordinance requires an art easement between the city and the property owner. In this case, uh, the property is owned by Branch Ashwood Associates. They're building a public shopping center, a Panda Express. Came forward, they have a, a, their front of their, their um restaurant that fronts on Ashford Dunwoody Road has a large class area. The kitchen is actually behind that, so they didn't want to show the kitchen and they didn't want to just put up a blank wall. So they came forward with a, with a mural idea. Presented it to the art commission. The art commission approved that. And so we're here tonight to talk to you, ask you to, to approve the easement between the city and Branch Ashwood. It's for ten years. So it's a long-term mural for them. And I'll take any questions.
Okay, any questions? Tom, you okay? This is our first commercial, right? Is everything else been at sprawl?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we have a couple more sprawl.
Right, coming.
That's already been approved and I think two more coming. We do have a number of other
Commercial.
Commercial property owners who are showing interest, so we should have some more present.
Okay, awesome. John?
Michael is, well, I'll just say move to approve.
Okay. We is move by John, second by Pam.
Michael, is there any, I mean, we are not judging the art, we are not, we are not looking at it, we don't.
I didn't even include the art in your packet.
Correct.
It's actually out there publicly, the Art Commission looked at the art, debated it, approved it. So all you have is the location and the agreement.
Correct. My my question is, is we are approving these, how, why, I guess really the why.
So.
And should they, if they're coming to us in the future, maybe is it a consent agenda? I just want to understand the why.
Yeah, we we've talked about that, we're actually.
Working on it.
Yeah, we're working at maybe changing this, possibly changing it from an easement to a separate agreement. This came about from from the attorneys wanting to make sure that that we we couldn't have a, you know, something slip through the Art Commission, that the city council had final say, not on the art.
Right.
But the location.
Point well taken, just in terms of.
So that that's the reason while it's here, yes, in the future, we could put it consent. But we may actually be, we're going to be changing.
We have some challenges with it as it's written, so we're looking at perhaps some changes that we'll bring to y'all.
But yeah, we did talk early on about possibly putting on consent, we wanted to do a few of them to get you comfortable, so you didn't think that we were just sort of trying to get something.
I understand the process and the challenges of it, it goes on consent forever for me, I'm good because I'll still review it anyway, but it's just a process, so thank you.
I I don't understand the location, is it just a little circle or is it?
No, it's a it's a fairly large.
Because you just have proposed signage with a dotted line and I didn't understand.
It's the entire glass, the the yellow area.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
It's that entire.
See a picture?
Yellow area.
Okay, the entire yellow area, so the little proposed signage.
It's almost 10 by 10.
Okay, so that proposed signage up in the upper right corner of that circle.
That's going to be actually their sign, so that will say Panda Express.
Gotcha. Okay, so that.
Yeah, sorry, we'll we'll make that a little more clear in the future.
Okay.
And and it's it's a little bit low-grade, but you you certainly will see it walking and you'll be able to see part of it as you drive by.
And and I can't tell you how much I love that they're doing this instead of a wall, because we're not really supposed to have walls on Ashford Dunwoody Road, so.
Yeah, it it actually worked out really well.
It works out really well, so I appreciate everyone that made the effort to make this happen.
And they worked long and hard and brought in the artists and and we did iteration after iteration.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. This is an action item. Oh, we have a motion, sorry. Any further discussion, seeing none, I call the question, signify by raising your hand.
Aye.
Sharon, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Sharon, I can do this part, please. So approval of unit price, Michael Smith, these are discussion items.
Yes. All right, the the primary purpose of the contract before you tonight is to provide quality assurance testing and inspection for mostly for city construction projects. Typically, we're talking about testing the the concrete for the strength, to make sure we have the strength we need, the compaction of the fill and the asphalt. We've done a couple of these contracts in the past, the current one has expired, so we're we're needing to do a new one. This type of contract lends itself to unit price because it's performed on an hourly or per-test basis. And a lot of it is dependent on the contractor's schedule and their their methods, so it it varies a lot from project to project. There are many engineering firms in the Atlanta area that perform these services, so there's a lot of competition and the unit rates do not vary too much. So we issued a request for qualifications to select the most qualified firms and then negotiate unit prices and we received 10 10 proposals and rated them as shown on the attached rating sheet. And the two firms, Nova Engineering and Environmental and Wood Environmental and Infrastructure scored significantly higher than the other firms, and so staff is recommending awarding contracts to those firms and we, at the next meeting, will have the final negotiated unit rates included for the approval request.
Any questions or comments? No, okay, consent for, well, we don't have the price, I guess it doesn't really matter.
Michael, were the prices, are you trying to get the prices to be the same with both companies or is one going to be more expensive for concrete testing versus the other? How does that going to work?
They they will be very similar. For for a lot of the big, you know, common items we use, they'll they'll probably be the same. There will be some variation of a few dollars on some of the other lesser-used categories, but they're going to be pretty close.
What, we need to? Why do we need to? Just wondering, because we normally don't have two on a lot of things, we only have one.
Right, yeah, on the on the last one of these, we had actually three, but two's good, just people, you know, tech technicians move companies, you know, one may be stronger in a certain area than another, one may be busy. We, on our current contract, we predominantly use one firm, but we have used the others for other things.
Okay, just figured out to us, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, I don't, I think we'll just put it on the regular agenda. All right, next, Michael, funding authorization for a talk, I don't know how to say that, to construct sidewalk on perimeter center east.
Okay, this project will complete a 300-foot gap in the current sidewalk on perimeter center east as shown on the map included in your packet. It's adjacent to a Montessori school and a future city park. And this our 2021 SPOS budget includes funding to complete this project. We're expecting the PCID board to vote later this month to contribute half the construction funding. Based on there's costs are detailed in the memo, but it's estimated to be up to $69,000 of city money to complete the project based on Autico's cost estimate from their unit price contract. And so we're recommending authorization of up to 90,000, including a 10% contingency with with a portion of that to be reimbursed by the CID for the construction and then depending on the final cost of the project, we'll have to finance will bring back a budget amendment at a later date to move $20,000 of surplus for the whole village-run sidewalk to cover the additional cost on this project.
All right, any? Go ahead, if you have a question.
Just looking at the map, Michael, it's just the blue section, correct? Or is it the orange too? The I'm guessing it's just the blue or is it?
It, yes, it's just the blue, the orange is on the other side, the old city hall side of the road. And that's in the the grub development.
Okay.
That's part of what they're supposed to build, you know, there there's no activity on that project right now, but you know, at some point, if that never moves forward, the city may want to come back and build that. But this project is just the blue and we're going to turn the corner and stop at the school driveway and when they build the park, they can connect from the park to the driveway and you'll have a sidewalk into the park.
All right, 69,000 is the right price for all 300 feet? It just seems high.
Yeah, well, you'll see, there's like 30, we had to do we didn't have to spend any money on design on this project, but we did spend 20, $29,000. We had to do a lot of utility exploration, there's a lot of telecom and there's a microcell tower on the corner. So that's you know, 15,000 of the 69 is is that exploration. The actual estimate for the sidewalk itself is also there's a lot of trees that have to be removed out there and there's a big berm that has to be cut down.
So that's the reason there's no sidewalk there, there's a lot of work to be done. So, okay, I got it, thank you, sir, that's no other questions, I got it, understand.
Does PCID want to put in more? Like, is this the, I mean, did they budget the 58,000 or is that just literally half?
Yeah, what we did is said half of the construction, the sub, the utility exploration and the contingency. And then we said we would pay for the construction management and testing, because they they they're picking that up on some other projects, so it's a 50/50.
Consent, oh, go ahead, Joe.
What's the with, with, why does it?
Well, we can make, we haven't, we didn't have to do a design, but we, everything else out there, well, to the south is six feet, so we can make it six feet here.
Consent, okay, consent, please. All right.
Thank you.
Approval of on-call contract, Mr. Thomas, please.
Hey, good evening, Mayor and Council. Can everyone hear me okay? I know we've had some AV issues, great, great, great. Let me share my screen. Everybody see that, okay? Is that visible?
Yes, Carl, it's visible.
Okay. All right, so the following is a proposal for the approval of on-call contract renewal for stormwater easement acquisition. Quick background. All utilities, including storm infrastructure, the components can be owned, operated and maintained by the local jurisdiction. It could be the Board of Education, it could be the local municipality, it could be a water and sewer authority. Or it could be privately-owned businesses, landowners, commercial properties, HOAs and et cetera. An extended service policy is basically it identifies what the municipality has taken ownership for and will publicly maintain and identifies what's privately owned as well. So in 2016, the city adopted an official extended service policy. And in 2017, its latest contract for easement acquisition services was approved for a sustainable water planning and engineering for easement acquisition services. So a quick summary, the city's extended service maintenance policy. So if you take the right-of-way right here, at a minimum, the municipality is responsible for maintaining this infrastructure. That varies based upon the municipality's funding availability, based on what what was approved by the elected officials. I live in Gwinnett County right now and they only take responsibility for the storm infrastructure in the right-of-way. The city, City of Dunwoody's extended service policy is a little bit different. If you go upstream from the right-of-way, we take the nearest upstream structure, so if there's a pipe that's partially in the right-of-way and it goes upstream to a junction box or a head wall or whatever the case may be, that's the last structure upstream that's maintained. If you go downstream, everything that's on the final plat till till it exits the enclosed system is maintained by the city. So if you look at a final plat, if you have a few junction boxes or tabletop inlets or whatever the case may be, you get to that outlet structure, that is the last structure according to the city's current extended service policy that is best maintained by the city. A quick, quick explanation, an easement is a right of, right, right, right to use the land owned by another party for specific purposes. Once you get out of that right-of-way, you'll start seeing easements delineated, it could be for purposes of drainage, it could be for sanitary sewer, water service lines, whatever the case may be. When you think about easements, try to look at it just like you would any other, you know, utility, whether it be storm, whether it be, you know, a cable line or whatever the case may be. Sometimes the the responsibility is completely private, sometimes it's publicly owned. But that easement is basically saying that those two property owners or whatever the case may be, that particular shared structure that's on that particular lot of land, the homeowner has given the right for that portion of their land to be be given for that shared use. Other important notes about drainage easements. When we meet up with the public all the time, there's common misconceptions. A drainage easement on a final plat does not imply public ownership. Great example of this is Dunwoody Commons, right up the road. Look at this, this subdivision is completely private. On the roads, they have no right-of-way, the roads are private, but they still have easements on the properties because the homeowners still have to, even though this infrastructure is maintained by the HOA, the homeowners still have to give that right to use that portion of land for the shared use of drainage. The easement agreements that the city executes when we conduct any sort of stormwater projects. It gives us permission to come onto the property at any given time to maintain the infrastructure that we've taken permanent maintenance responsibility for. Granted, the easement doesn't reduce the size of the property, but it does explain the rights and responsibilities of the owner-operator and of the property owner. So with the existing contract expired, staff posted a request for proposals for easement acquisition services, received submittals from five firms. Staff scored each based on project experience, references, resumes, approach and cost. The incumbent firm, Sustainable Water Planning and Engineering, still scored the highest. They had the highest rating in project experience, resume, qualifications and approach, they were number one in all of those categories, they were second. And the total total cost for temporary and permanent easements, there's been no change in what the city currently pays for this particular service. So based on the review, the city recommends to renew the contract with Sustainable Water Planning and Engineering for easement acquisition services for stormwater management projects. Any questions?
Any questions? Consent, any questions, consent? Okay, consent, next time, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mid-year budget amendment. You are not Linda Neighbors.
But it's a tag team, she's coming with me, or she's going to sit there until she's needed.
Okay.
This is the last item on your on your list today and this is tied to the millage rate that we discussed earlier today. We wanted to make sure that when you voted or you had your first hearing on the millage rate, you had the beginnings of the discussion on the mid-year budget itself. And one of the things that we're doing is like every iteration you've seen of the budget for the past two years, we're step-by-step improving the process and making it more clear and more transparent to both you and the public as we go through it. This proposed budget, which you would vote on on July 12th, which would be after you actually adopt the village rate. And to give you, put a pin in that for a second, we're somewhat trapped in when we have to adopt the village rate with the county and we're going to work with negotiating on that next year. I think that to have us do it before July 1st is a bit unfair, it's something we'll have to discuss with them at a later date. But the things this budget proposal does are three different things. The first one is to use drastically less fund balance than originally projected. Originally, when we adopted last year's mid-year, we were in, I will call it a panic, not sure what revenues would dip, what would happen. So we draconianly cut revenue estimates by 20%, went from basically 25 to 20 million. We also had department heads cut expenditures by another million, which even though it's less than that, is is quite a cut across the board, it's basically 5% for a lot of departments. Well, the revenues came in much better than what we thought, but again, we did it very ultra-conservatively. And we know that we base the 2021 revenues on that same number, too too soon to turn it around. So at mid-year, we're proposing to increase the revenues to about three, three and a half million. Most of that contained within property tax. What we did was the the assumptions we made earlier were on an incredibly low collection rate, it came nowhere near that, it came to traditional collection rates. Our biggest hit is still the hotel motel tax, of which the general fund does receive some of that funding. That is the the thing that if we're ever asked what hit us the most, it is hotel motel taxes. Everything else, there are smaller decreases. So what this budget does is it increases revenue by three and a half million in the general fund. And it increases expenditures by only one million. It basically is restoring a lot of the operational cuts which were made last year at mid-year and carried on in the next year's budget. Now, I'd like to highlight some things that are in there that are not necessarily restorations. The park staff that Mr. Walker had approved today is in there, that's a new thing, so the funding's in this budget. We've also are recommending when we propose the original municipal service contract, so the contracts for public works, the contracts for parks, we knew we would have to decrease some things, so we took new additions and shelved them to the side. So we're adding back, there was a GIS technician that had been added into the contract, but we we held back on it and cut it from the budget. That's to help with ancillary work and just so you know, GIS is, as we call it, a one-plus staff. We have one technician and then we have a supervisor over that, but there's been so much demand in that area between public works and other things that we definitely have the workload for it. The third thing that's added in there is there was in the municipal con- This, uh, third thing that's added in there is there was in the municipal contract, a, what we're calling a field service representative for public work. Originally, we're going to have it as a halftime position. This would be a person and Michael can answer it, but it's, it's basically to handle the field calls and the problems that you get the C-click fixes and stuff like that. We have so many of those volume wise, we need somebody to help shepherd that project, process. So this would be a halftime person under the original contract, but we're proposing to amend it to a full-time person. So that would be added in on this budget. Uh, we're also looking at a, increasing the amount for the, what we're calling the tree fund from what was sixty-six thousand to thirty or to ninety-six thousand, which was its original amount. The rest is a lot of restoration of cuts in that. So that's the operating side of the equation. And the, the second thing that we're doing here, or the third thing, is relooking at the capital budgets that everybody had, that adopted at the process. And this is what's going to happen at mid-year. You're going to get it. Now, we did two very, very conservative revenue estimates for both the SPOLOSS, the sales tax fund and the hotel motel tax fund. Now, the SPOLOSS fund, we basically decreased by twenty-five percent. And to let you know, it took about six minutes, six months for it to work out and sales taxes as good as it ever was. Now, there are all of us that work with cities and counties in the area are all discussing with each other why. Uh, because we can't get individual retail data, which is understandable. It would give away proprietary information. Uh, we got two assumptions. There is a little bit of latent demand that's been built up with consumers. However, there was a secondary part where the sales tax collection methods also increased. So we're not really sure where it is, but we feel comfortable with increasing back to our pre-pandemic level. Still don't want to forecast any growth in it yet. But so we've done on the restoration of that. Now, what does that do? That gives us about a million or so funding in this year and in the rest of the CIP. So in the schedules that you have with you, and this is one where I'm not going to go reading through them. What we've done is put the schedule of the CIP for SPOLOSS as you adopted it with the budget for this year. And also a secondary schedule that everything that changed, whether a project went from one year to the other or was increased, it's highlighted in yellow. So you've got that in there and it's there for the public to review also over the next month. And we won't go through that tonight for a lack of time constraints. But it's quite, I think, a good, good idea to do it the way it was. Um, the things that happened in public works, because most of SPOLOSS is headed that way, are two projects which have higher than anticipated construction costs. And then we had internal discussions. And since we can treat this first year kind of like a windfall going back up to the normal level, we looked at all the smaller sidewalk projects that were already in the list that can be done within this calendar year or, or uh, dripping over into next year. So for treating it like a windfall, saying these are projects that we know we can get completed. And that way, when we do the budget process next year, those are taken off the table and are basically, are basically done. And we're not worried about how to fund a second part of it. And that's probably the better way to manage those. On the hotel motel tax, uh, even, uh, Michael Starling was exactly right. We're seeing month by month, small increases, but there is no way to say we are anywhere close to pre-pandemic levels, nor is there any way to say that we will be that way anytime soon. So we've cleaned up some things in there and basically restored it to an incredibly low level, as I'll call it, and leave it at that until we have, and I, I, I'm calling it my own thing, until I see twenty-four months of pre-pandemic levels. I'm never going to say they're, they're at, at a new, a new way we can forecare growth on it. But we've done the same thing with hotel motel, shown a lot of cleanup on that side. And treating it more like a pay-as-you-go fund to finish things or do things that we can afford with it at that time. And those are the things we're doing on this. We can dialogue over the next month over and it won't be officially on your agenda to July twelfth. So some of these numbers may change, probably not substantially, but allow us some scripters errors and things where we find things we'd like to propose afterwards.
Alright, any questions that need to be asked or have tonight, anybody? So you'll bring this back to us in a month. And if people have specific concerns, please reach out ahead of time. Um, I have a quick question. When the school system builds a new school, do they have to put in the same sidewalks if it was a commercial establishment or do we, Michael, do you know? Like if, if it's a development requirement?
Generally, what the school systems say is that they cannot spend money off of their property.
Right, but if it's their, if it's our right of way, does it become our property? And like if they have to put a sidewalk, like if somebody was buying that piece of property and they were putting a building there, they would trip, be triggered certain requirements.
That's right.
Is it, does it, do, those requirements get triggered for them?
No.
Okay. And they have not done the traffic study or anything yet, right?
We're hoping we're going to get it this month.
Okay, because we need to talk about that because we don't want to obligate ourselves until they do what they're supposed to do. Go ahead.
Just want to thank Jay and Linda and everything, everybody for putting this together. This is a really good document. This is what I started with, the review for my packet personally. And thank you for sitting down with me and going over it this afternoon as well. So, yeah, good work. Thank you.
Public comments? There's no public here. Uh, Brittany, can you check online, please? Not Brittany, Ginger, I'm sorry.
If you, if you. If you would like to make your comment, please raise your hand in the Zoom app. I see no hands raised at this time.
Okay. City manager comments?
Uh, yes, Mayor, if y'all will, um, if the council will wait for just a moment um, at the dais for, uh, right after the meeting, please.
Right, take a picture.
And, and no executive session, no executive session.
Okay, no executive session. Council comments?
Just want to say thank you to the Army. Happy birthday, two hundred forty-sixth birthday today for the Army, for my Army brethrens and so on. And today was Flag Day as well. So thank everybody for getting those flags out there today. Um, also notice, shout out to Michael Smith and team. I saw some gravel being laid down, uh, over on Chamlee Dunwoody, the north side by Vermic. And I think that was that kind of, you know, we got that air arm thing. You know, I haven't put sidewalks in yet, but you know, we're kind of, was that, was that what they were doing? Yeah, awesome. Thanks.
Real quick, uh, for everyone to FYI, the parade, the Fourth of July parade is on Monday, the fifth this year because Sunday is the fourth and our parade route goes past, uh, big churches and we have staging at churches. So it's Monday, the fifth.
Kim?
You know, we had our first big event at Brook Run on Saturday. Um, you know, first big event for the public. You know, obviously we had the high school events, but uh, came off very well. Thanks, thanks to Parks and everybody involved, but it was a great event and uh, we look forward to more. And if anybody's listening, doesn't know what I'm talking about, figure it out because you want to be at the next one. Bye.
And um, the next one, well, that we're having a July fourth parade, a July fourth concert at five. And our next big concert, uh, like, which is a seventies theme, uh, seventies music is July tenth. At six PM at the amphitheater, the Fourth of July concert is at five PM, I think. Um, and with that, uh, Tom, did you have anything? No, no. Tom's in the dark, right? With that, I will need a motion.
To adjourn, please.
Thank you. Move by Jim. Second by Stacy. Uh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. But, and also we only have one meeting this month. So that's just, alright, thank y'all.